Subcommittee to order. We have a quorum of two, which is only three on our committee. I think Paul Cavanearl is coming, I hope. We have a busy agenda, so we're going to try and move through it as efficiently as possible. I'm looking for approval of the minutes from July 21st, 2025.
So.
Hey, I'll second it. Can we both approve?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, discussion on the signage for business owners during construction. I think you all had received an email from Paul regarding, you know, his thoughts, his opinions on this. So Paul, I wondered if you would come to the mic and go to summarize the email.
Sure. Well, I think it's important to to go back and look at maybe where this where this precipitated, where this came from. And I think it came from Midgeon Avenue from this the summer, from a lot of the work that was going on, especially at the corner of Woolcut between La Monica's and the and the flower shop and what have you. And I think what happened with that was a very unique situation because there was a lot going on at that location. And there was a lot of different contractors. And I think that just it was a lot of it was it was an unforeseen group of circumstances. It all came together to make a couple of days that were really awful for some of the the businesses for being able to get in and out of their and other properties. We had the gas company working on Woolcut. We were working on Midgeon. And then even the later in the summer, we had Church Street being closed off. And Church Street being closed off, we were detouring down Midgeon, and Midgeon was detouring away from there as well. So there was a lot going on there that was really hard to foresee. But I think if you if you step back and just look at what what we do, sometimes it's it's we can avoid it, other times, other times we can't. We just have to deal with it at the time when it happens. We try to anticipate as much as we can during the the bid phase of the project to try to look at exactly what's going on. The contractor is required to submit a detour plan when when before he starts work. So we we set that all up and we make sure that there is a route available. And as part of that, our contract specifications, we also make sure we stipulate that all businesses have to have access 24/7. That can be fulfilled 99% of the time. There is the odd, well, I shouldn't say the odd time. There is times, especially when you're doing new concrete curbs and sidewalks, where if there's no other viable entrance for that business, then they do end up not having access. Although we try to schedule that either when they're not open or, for instance, like when we did when we paved and excavated Midgeon Avenue from church to Pearl, we did that at night to try to accommodate the businesses because we were actually excavating down 18 inches in front of their their driveways. And there was no way they could they could get in. But for the typical homeowner, we sent out a press release saying that they have to find alternate parking during that few days or a week of of work. So we deal with it by either, you know, press releases. The contractor, especially on Midgeon, was really good. They were going door to door. They were talking with the businesses and dealing with it on a daily basis, which is really what you have to do when you're when you're going to be, you know, restricting the access on on those properties. So that that's why, you know, sometimes it's hard to actually have signs made that are specific to that business. Like, we don't, we can't actually specify, or I don't know, maybe, you know, I've always thought that we don't want to make signs that are specific to a business name because that could potentially show favoritism towards one business or another. So we typically try to keep things as neutral and generic as we can, which is why we just say detour here and there. And local traffic only is typically what we what we post on our signs. You know, we do have signs up now that say, you know, road is open for access for for businesses, which we did put signs up addressing the issue in that respect. And I know Lily and Vine did have their own sign that they put up in a couple places, which at the time they wanted to put them up. I didn't see an issue with it. So I thought that was that was at least, you know, favorable for them, so.
Yeah, it may have precipitated it, but I think it certainly, I think, brought attention to the issue. And I think we've, you know, I think some of the council members, you know, have noted that there are other municipalities who do acknowledge businesses in when they're doing road construction. And, you know, I drive to New Brighton and Middletown, and, you know, Mala, you drive in different directions. So, you know, you had mentioned, I thought, in the email, which was, you know, important to me, that you could probably put it as as a part of the bid package.
Yes.
You know, you put out a bid package that they would somehow, you know, and to me, that would be an alternative to doing an ordinance.
Yes.
So.
And and we did that for Franklin Plaza. And interestingly enough, there's still a sign that still is up at the corner of Center and East Main Street that says businesses are open during construction. For whatever reason, we've just haven't taken it down. But it we specifically did that for that project because we were shutting down all of Franklin Street. And we had actually built a sidewalk for those businesses because that was a unique situation. They had, like, the yoga studio, they have access from the back of their building onto what used to be, you know, Franklin Street. So we did that there. And yes, we could certainly, you know, when we do future projects, we can have signs made specifically in the contract. We can put in the contract that the contractor has to make these signs. We can we can specify the wording and that they have to install them during during the construction. So that that is that is certainly feasible to do it that way.
I think that would address the concerns that we have and that the business owners have.
Yep.
How how do we make sure that's implemented going forward if it's not an ordinance?
It would be. So we could make it a policy just through the engineering department.
And Kim, is there something that we can require state roads, for example, like Route 4, where the state has to comply with that as well?
I don't think we can, we could mandate that. The state kind of has their own.
Yeah, is there any influence that the municipality, that Torrington, would have in sending a letter to the state? Because that's obviously that's.
So I think, actually, thinking about it now, I think that if it's a project that the city's involved in, then that could get flushed out during the design phase as well. Because the district, like when we're doing East Main Street sidewalks, the district has a full review process of the design plans. And that is definitely something that could be implemented and said again in the specifications of the project during the bid phase with state approval before we go out to bid. So, yeah, that could happen the same as a city project then. Because I believe, and I just started with the city when we did Main Street in front of the Warner. And I believe that the state, that was actually, we incorporated the access, like for the Warner and Nut and the Nutmeg and and all those businesses along the front there, Sasso's and whatever. So that was all mandated at that time as well, that they had to keep access. And we actually cordoned off a sidewalk separate from the construction, again, like we did on Franklin Plaza, so.
Well, I'm sure your office has been busy with calls with the amount of, you know, road construction that's been going on through the city.
Yeah.
People have been detouring one way or the other. So I know that we want to get these projects done, and it'll be for the betterment of our community. But if we could have, you know, assurance and I'm looking for any other comments. Number two, the ordinance, whether or not, it's just a discussion on signage, road consent.
We can definitely make that a procedure in our bid process.
Okay.
That all the any businesses that the signing for, whether it's detours or access for those businesses be put right into the bid specifications.
So we're going to have confidence, and plus you're on the record now for, you know, for having that happen. So that would, I think, hopefully satisfy the other members of our council and those people who have made contact, I think, with any of the members of the council.
Yeah, but you specified the size of the signs would be in your policy as well?
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, clearly, they have to be legible to people driving by.
Yep.
See little.
If you like, I can draft up a a policy and draft policy and circulate it for comment if you like.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, definitely, I can do that.
Thank you, Paul.
Any other further discussion?
No.
Yeah.
A long agenda here, so Paul, thank you, and I appreciate you coming. And appreciate the early on email that you had sent to us as well.
My pleasure. No problem. Thank you.
All right, number three is the discussion on the speed enforcement ordinance. So there should be, we can either see it online or in our paperwork here. All right, do we have anyone? Is Chief of Police here or Sergeant Altus? And they asked for it to be on the agenda, correct? Why don't we just hold it at this point, should they show up?
Yeah, I agree. I think they have to definitely.
You do?
No, no, they need to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Number four, the discussion on the farmland ordinance. That was another one I know that was brought up in a public hearing during our city council as a consideration for the subcommittee. So I think that you worked on something, our corporate council worked on something.
No, I didn't work on.
Oh, okay.
So I think all that you have is the letter from Stacy Maldonado, the assessors, that explains the process.
Yes.
And I don't think, I don't, Stacy, maybe you can help. I don't think there's an ordinance about this, is there? It's just something that the city council, maybe by resolution, agrees to do?
There is an ordinance for the farm building exemption. It's a local option.
Okay.
Currently, the city allows buildings up to $50,000 of assessment to be exempted if they apply for it annually. So when it was brought up in city council, I believe the gentleman was asking for an increase to that because this year in legislation, they did sign and approve that the by vote of legislative body, that that could be increased to $500,000.
From 50 to 500, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, up to 500,000. I mean, it's, you know, the choice of the legislative body where you set that at. But it allows you to increase it from that 50 up to 500,000.
So we could do this.
You could.
Under this, well, obviously, would require a vote of this ordinance committee in a public hearing and ultimately vote from the council. But how do you, what are your thoughts about this? Unfortunately, not a lot of farm left in Torrington.
There's not a lot of farm left in Torrington. You're correct with that. You know, across the nation, I think every state, every municipality has done what they can to preserve farmland because they understand that, you know, high taxes, stuff like that can definitely put a burden on them. And then they start to unfortunately sell off their their land. And we don't want to see that in Torrington. You know, we've got two very viable farms, dairy farms. There are other farms, but they're the two largest. You know, in the grand scheme of things, what it would cost the taxpayers is very minimal. And I think it would preserve hundreds of acres of land here in Torrington. You know, I don't want to stand here and push policy or or seem that I am, you know, favoring farms over anyone else. I wrote the letter so that you could have kind of a background of where the city stands, where the nation stands really on that and what your your abilities are now because of the change in legislation this year in increasing some of those some of those values.
So I haven't reviewed, I've reviewed Stacy's memo, and it looks to me, looking at the statute, I mean, our ordinance now, 18730, just has the $50,000 amount in it. I think the the simple thing would be to amend that ordinance to state, and again, it's not more than, it's not more than 500,000, but it strikes me that it's the kind of thing that the city council could do annually. They could change that exemption year to year. You think?
I guess it could be brought before council annually. We require that the farms submit an application annually.
Right.
So if they don't submit it, you know, they would lose that exemption. Or if they've changed their use on that particular building, they would lose it for that particular building.
So they file an application once a year, asking for a certain amount, certain dollar amount?
Well, they file it for that building and then be exempted. If it's under the 50,000, it's exempted in full. If it's over a 50,000, 50,000 in assessment, then we exempt it up to that 50,000. And that is per farm building. So if there are multiple buildings on the farmland, they are eligible for it for each building. That's why if you see on the page there, I have listed out total exemptions that each farm has gotten. And you'll see some that are over, well over that 50,000, others that are under. It's because some of them are getting in on multiple buildings there.
Guess what I would suggest is since since both the statute and our ordinance speak in terms of an assessed value of not more than 50,000, that, in my view, gives the city council the authority to not give 50,000. They could decide in any given year to give less of an exemption than that.
They could, they would have to come and change the ordinance to do that because currently the ordinance.
Well, I don't see, I don't see where this ordinance now says it's 50,000. It says not more than 50,000. So my, so I would, you know, maybe the language should be be determined on an annual basis, something like that. Because who like, who decided, when did the city council vote that everybody's going to get the maximum, the 50,000?
So I believe it was last updated in '05. And I can tell you historically, what I've seen in the assessors' records is it's been 50,000 if it's over a $50,000 value. Otherwise, it's just been exempted in full.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, and I'll look at it a little more carefully. But but it sounds to me, it looks to me like the statutory scheme is that the statute just fixes a maximum. And so you have a maximum amount, but you don't have to give a maximum. And so unless you want to say it's going to be the maximum, then why bother saying not more than? Just say 500,000, period.
Redetermined annual basis.
It's what I'm suggesting.
Or not, not a city council, but the assessors' office, I would think.
Well, okay, established by the assessor, but approved by the city. Do you want city council?
I believe the state statute, though, words it went that way, not more than 50,000.
I understand that.
And that's why the ordinance kind of falls in that same.
Yeah, but within that spectrum of 52, I mean, clearly, it's 10 times the amount now, they're saying.
Correct, up to 500,000 now.
Shouldn't that be ultimately the city council voting on it?
Right, and so the statute statute reads, any municipality upon approval by its legislative body.
Correct.
Which is you guys.
Yes, correct.
So it's not just, it's the assessor, you guys do it.
Right.
And that's the way I'm reading this, is you 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 could do it annually. What's what's it going to be for grand list October 1, 2025, 2024?
There's nothing in the statute that I know of that says you can't. It just means that every year that we'd be having this conversation, you know.
Why wouldn't we just do the 500,000, which is what the state statute allows?
The state, well, again, it says not to exceed. It doesn't set it, and that's my point.
Right, it doesn't say.
It's 500,000, period.
Right.
It says not to exceed.
Right.
That's a little room.
Without a doubt.
It could be zero. Maybe some municipality could say, we're not going to give any exemption. So the range is 0 to 500,000. I I guess you could vote, you don't have to do it every year if you don't want to. I guess you could just do it every two years, three years, four, every, you know. But but at some point, you need, the city council at some point needs to set what the exemption is going to be.
Or to approve what the assessor has declared. The assessor.
Well, she recommends.
Okay. Because here's my thinking on this. Isn't one of the reasons this whole topic has come up is because we want to help our farmers feel like they don't have to sell their land specifically to the siding council or to solar developers, correct? Isn't that basically what triggered this entire conversation?
There was a farmer.
Yeah, and so that could change easily on a yearly basis, depending on what the siding council is pushing for. And if a farmer comes and says, oh, blah, 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 here's, you know, and they make the and they make the and support an argument that says, I could be selling it for this amount to this group that wants to put a solar farm in. However, if I were to get an exemption of this, you know, very specific stuff. And now it's up to the city council. Do we want to give them that tax break in order to not for them to not sell to the site? I mean, that's a citywide issue, I believe.
Correct.
Which should which should be part of what the city council discusses and decides on behalf of our citizens.
Yeah, and I think that's that's my point. I mean, you could, you could amend the ordinance to just say 500,000, period.
No, 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 it's it's very scalable, yeah.
Right, I mean.
Correct.
Not to exceed, not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
And and again, and I think the city council, as the legislative body, has the authority to vote on that as as frequently as you want.
Yeah, I think what you said before.
Do it once a year, you could do it every two years.
The decision from the assessors' office to be approved by the legislative body on a yearly basis. There's only about 10 farms here, 12 farms.
Right.
So Iowa.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. My, if you wanted to have a review time for it or review period set for it, my recommendation would be at revaluation because that's when those assessments change. They are then set for every five years.
I think that makes sense.
So if you want to have, you know, something put in the ordinance where you're going to review it, I think annually would be an overkill because the assessment's going to stay the same. But every five years, I mean, and that's kind of what prompted, at least in my belief, that's what prompted the the farmer to come is the assessments went up during the revale, you know, there's concerns, so.
But five years is not precise enough a tool essentially for the city city council to say, here's a here's a whole chunk of farmland at the top of Highland Avenue that's some solar developer wants to strip down and blah, blah, blah. And the farmer back against the wall wants some tax relief to say no to that deal. And it doesn't make sense that we say, well, we'll we'll deal with this five years down the road. No, he needs or she needs to have help, you know, nine months from now or whatever. So if we really want this changed ordinance, modified ordinance, to give the city the tools it needs to be able to assist farmers to say no to huge solar development on their land, we really should be able to review it on a yearly basis, I think, you know.
Well, this is just clarification. So this is really the buildings on the on the property, correct?
Correct.
So it's.
Correct. It is is not, it is not the land, it is the buildings.
Right.
So the land, the land is put as a use assessment.
Yeah.
Right, but if the city can give them, as opposed to 50,000, if the city can give them 250,000 for that building that hasn't really changed in, you know, 87 years, but essentially that helps them not sell that to developers that we don't want.
I agree, and I think it also encourages a farm, you know, the remaining farms that we have left, to do something with that building to increase its value.
Indeed.
So, you know, I sort of like the language of, you know, up to or the maximum of 500,000. And then if it needs to come back every five years during the revalue revaluation, then that's only.
But the five years, and my my point is that what if what if Deming Bruce, suddenly, you know, somebody wants to buy his, you know, 308, whatever he's got, 150 acres to put a solar farm, and he, you know, he needs.
Between the five years.
In the between the five years, that's what I'm saying, you need two or you're three.
I think annual is too much, you know.
We put language. It can be appealed on a yearly basis by them. It can.
What Stacy's saying is they apply for it annually anyway?
Correct, they have to apply for it annually.
Gives her the authority to say, you know, okay, we now have an exemption up to 500,000. So the value of the building, and we're talking about the building on the farm.
Yeah.
You know, is now they've enhanced the, you know, whatever on the farm, the building on the farm, to now it's 250,000 as an assessed value.
But that's giving the assessors' office the final say as to whether this is in the best interest of the city to give them a sweetheart deal, which is what, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it's allowing her to give that exemption. Am I correct?
But it's taking away from the city council with a vote. And I'm feeling like it should, you know, long after we're gone. I think I think people sitting in these seats would like to be able to say, yeah, that's justified, no, that's not.
That's why you want to do it annually. I'm just trying to understand the reasoning.
I think better language would be, they can apply for a revision. The the owners can apply for revision through the assessors' office so that, I mean, if not all these people, if one or two of these people suddenly are getting offers to put a solar farm and and they say, you know, I could use some help here. You go to the assessor, assessor then brings that particular one, two years down the road, and found the city council said they would like to revise this upwards of from 75,000 to 275,000. City council says yea or nay.
So can I understand, so they're coming annually because the assessed value of that building is more than 50,000?
No, they're coming annually because there are requirements in order to receive it. So the use has to be exclusively for farming. So if they change the use of the building, you know, they start renting it out to put store cars in it or something. We no longer.
To the timing of it.
They also have to show either $15,000 in profit or loss as a farm to show they are a legitimate farming operation.
Okay.
And they have to supply a Schedule F.
So I think because we're struggling with the language, and this is only on the agenda for discussion.
Yeah.
And we have both you and corporate council.
Perhaps something.
Draft something for us to review at at our next ordinance meeting that is in the best interest of those, you know, properties, those buildings on those farm properties.
And I would just was just going to add, timing piece of it, though, is it's an exemption against the assessment, right? It's not a credit against tax. It's an exemption for the assessed value.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
And the assessments are done every year.
They are not.
You do revaluation every five years, but you send out assessment notices every year, right?
Only if there's a change to the assessment. Because we don't change the assessment unless they change something to the building. If they add to it or otherwise, it's set for the five years.
I think to Paul's point, we'll draft something that gives the city council as much flexibility as possible. That's that's whatever, however frequently you want to do it, you can do it. And we'll come up with some language that'll work.
You know, the statutory language and whatever.
But there's just, you know, in those unique cases where somebody says, I would like to get an exemption because blah, 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 I've had an offer.
Right.
Not all the most, mostly people, I'm sure they just want a rubber stamp, you know, continue last year, continue last year, don't need us. But where somebody's getting an offer, they would like some relief from the city that comes before us to consider.
I think the other thing is this statute becomes effective October 1, 2025. So if we adopt the ordinance, people could come in looking for this enhanced assessment up to 500,000 for the October 1, 2025 list, right?
Correct. Correct, legislation.
To get their applications in.
November 1st.
Excuse me? Excuse me?
November first.
So, so it's too late for this October?
No, they have until November first.
Yeah. Oh, oh, okay, okay.
So they're approving October.
Yeah, okay.
At that window.
All right.
Okay.
I get it.
So we'll plan on putting this on the agenda for next ordinance, meeting, and, um, thank you, Stacy, for coming and helping with the explanation, and for your future work with corporate council to work on some language that we can review.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, number five, discussion on chapter eighty-five, the building construction alterations, renovation, and demolition. So you also have in your packet what the current ordinance is, am I correct?
I didn't see it in the package.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the new ordinance.
This is the newest.
And it's a complete rewrite.
It's a complete, so we don't have the old?
No.
Other than what's-
Well, Heather didn't, it's not in the, your package. You'll have to look at it online.
I have it in my book, though.
Maybe.
All right, so before we don't get stuck in the weeds here, um,
But Kevin?
What can you review?
Kevin is here, you can talk about it. Kevin?
Do you mind coming up, Kevin, and?
You know, I think the main, and I'll just point out, but he can go into more detail. The, the main point was to change the fee structure because Kevin's conclusion was that the fees that the building department was charging for the various permits was way too low.
Yeah, I mean-
That's the big substantive change, but, you know, instead of just piecemeal changing the fee structure, what he presented was a complete rewrite of the, the statute, the ordinance, right? Is that fair to say?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, these haven't been updated since twenty-ten, so clearly it's time. Um, we're just basically keeping pace with, um, other municipalities in the area, neighboring municipalities, and other municipalities of similar size, and we're not even exceeding them. We're basically getting, approaching where they're at or staying slightly below. And it's, it's not a huge increase, but at least, you know, it will obviously generate, you know, more revenue for the city.
So we don't see you here very often, so do you mind introducing yourself to-
My name's Kevin Gillett, I'm the building official.
Thank you.
So what I'd point out, and if you did bring up the ordinance, it's chapter eighty-five in the ordinances. You'll see there's a section of fees for permits, and there's an itemization of like, well, there's thirteen things under residential and commercial buildings, and it's like, it itemizes each little thing. Uh, and then there's a separate section for mechanical and miscellaneous work. And the way the permits, uh, the fees now in what Kevin is, is proposing is it doesn't break it out like that, it goes just by the total cost of the project.
Yeah, I just think, you know, typically when we're looking at a revision of this magnitude, and I have it in writing my big book, um, you know, it's easier to sort of follow for this committee anyway to really have what the, you know, eighty-five dash one, what the standard's designated, and then what, what the changes are. So look at the, but we're only having a discussion at this point, but, um, sorry.
The statute, the ordinance is on the screen.
Yeah, and I have-
I know what you're, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
You, you like it where you show the changes, like the strikeouts and the brackets, so you can see what the changes are.
Well, I can tell you, I mean, it's, it's pretty minimal.
In this case, it's a wholesale, delete the whole thing that's there and put this in. Just to be honest with you, I started going through that exercise that you're talking about.
Yeah.
And it was like, I don't know how to do this. It's, because it's a real, it's a complete rewrite of this section of the ordinance.
But I'm looking at, you know, eighty-five dash one to eighty-five dash three, and they're really, to your point, Kevin, there's not a significant change in the language, what you're posing.
Right, nor is it a significant change in terms of the dollar amount being charged.
So, uh, really where the fees come into play, it's eighty-five dash five, correct?
In the, in the current ordinance, it's eighty dash five.
Right.
In the new one, it's eighty-five three.
Correct, and it's all contained within eighty-five three.
And I don't mean to challenge, believe me, any ordinance, and one of the things we're trying to do is update our ordinances from twenty-ten to more current, but anytime you're proposing a change that does, you know, influence businesses, individuals who, you know, certainly want to issue or have a permit issued. So I want to make sure that we all understand it, you know, Molly and the entire hall and the entire council. So if, if you're not going to do the whole thing, what's the most significant fee change? Can you help us with that?
There really isn't, I, I, one particular significant fee, it's a very minor change. So as, as a, for instance, okay, so, um, we're building permit, simple building permit for, say, a ten thousand dollar deck, okay, residential. Previously was, um, the total cost for that job or for that fee would be one forty-five sixty. Now it's one ninety-two sixty, so it's, it's a change of forty-seven dollars. For, for fees that haven't been updated for fifteen years. So in the grand scheme of things, it's not, you know, a permit fee for a ten thousand dollar residential deck used to be one forty-five sixty, now it'll be one ninety-two sixty.
I, I can try to explain it. If you, if you look at the current-
Yeah, I have it.
Eighty-five dash five.
Yeah.
And you see all of those things, like the first number one, square feet of living space, sixty dollars a square foot, foundation, fifteen dollars a square foot, accessory buildings, all of those. Instead of having all those things itemized, if you look at the new one, twenty-five, eighty-five point three, it speaks just in terms of like thirty dollars for the first one thousand in job value, fifteen dollars for each additional one thousand dollars in job value. So it doesn't itemize all those different things you could have that would be components of a building project. It's looking at the project as a whole, and you pay thirty dollars for the first thousand bucks and fifteen for each, each additional thousand.
And it used to be twenty-five thou, or twenty-five dollars for the first thousand and twelve dollars for each additional thousand. So again, it hasn't changed a whole lot. It went up five dollars for the first thousand, and it went up three dollars for each additional thousand.
So substantively, it only changed a little bit, but structurally, the way the statute is, the ordinance is structured.
Right.
It's changed dramatically.
But this seems a lot more streamlined.
Yeah, just to streamline it and simplify it, it's easier for people to follow.
Yeah, exactly.
And I think what, what Kevin mentioned to me also is especially with the new online permitting.
Yep, exactly.
This is a lot easier.
Yeah, that's why we needed to do that.
Okay, that's helpful. All right, you know that this is on the agenda just for discussion, um, so.
Does this have to be a public hearing as well?
Oh, yeah, yeah, but we, we would need to approve it on this level and then.
You know, I can, I can tell you that what I did do, as I said, I tried to, I initially started thinking, well, I'll do the, I'll do the deletions and the assertions and all of that, and it was, it was really, really impossible. Because it's, it's a complete, resend this and adopt the new one. But I did try to pay attention to those substantive things, like, you know, you can't build a building without getting a zone, without getting a permit. So, uh, beyond the fees were all those substantive things in the old ordinance, in the new ordinance, and they were. It just might not be in the same place, but they're all in there. Yeah, it's-
Yeah, there's far fewer sections.
Yeah. I mean, talking several pages less.
Yeah.
But easier to understand.
Yeah.
The only thing I didn't see, and I can't remember, Kevin, if, um, I mentioned this to you, because the current ordinance has a section eighty-five dash seven for moving permits.
Yeah, moving, it would, it would-
See that in here?
It would just be a building permit. I mean, nothing, we would never issue a permit for the quote-unquote transportation of a structure. It would be a permit to remove the old structure. And then a permit to erect it in a new location, whatever they do in the meantime as far as transporting it. If that were ever to happen, it's, I've never experienced it happening, but if that were ever to happen, then that's, that's how it would work.
Okay. You do still have in the new ordinance a section for demolition permits.
Well, because we issued demolition permits independently of, you can, you can take a building permit to remove a structure and reconstruct it, but you can also take a demolition permit to just remove the structure altogether. It just goes away, and that's why it's separate.
And it should be, yeah, I totally agree.
And how's this com- Yeah, and approximately, how's this compared to other municipalities like Torrington?
So we're, we're right there. Um, we're a little bit cheaper. Um, other municipalities, let's see, like, so as far as locally, Litchfield County, for instance, um, Winston is thirty dollars for the first thousand, they're eighteen dollars for every thousand after that, again, we're seventeen. Harrenton is thirty-two for the first thousand, twelve after that. Watertown is twenty for the first thousand, fifteen after that. Um, West Hartford is thirty-two for the first thousand, seventeen after that. Um, comparably sized municipalities, um, Cheshire, thirty thousand or thirty dollars for the first thousand, fifteen after that. Um, same thing with Vernon. Norwich is thirty-five for the first thousand, seventeen after that. Um, Enfield is, uh, well, they're sixteen fifty per thousand, and then with a minimum of, of fifty, fifty dollars. But, so I mean, as far as, you know, local municipalities and similar, we're, you know, we're right in the ballpark.
But with all this discussion going on about building, you know, affordable housing, those kind of projects, which are, whatever they are, fifteen to twenty million dollar projects, you know, a, a guy putting up a shed in his backyard is one thing, but how does this delta, how does this change? What, what are the, some of the gross numbers that will change on a fifteen million dollar apartment? I mean, they would, these, and it's, this same permit structure would apply to that kind of a building clearly, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so what is the math on, do you have that? Or, I, I mean, if I were smarter, I could figure it out myself, but, um-
For what?
Well, the difference between the, the current permitting fee and, and the revised fee, how much more are they going to be paying for a fifteen million dollar affordable housing project?
I mean, I'd have to run those, I mean, you, you, so fifteen million dollar affordable housing project brings in all sorts of additional fees and everything. I mean, you've got, you've got independent plan review fee, so you'd have to have a third-party plan reviewer because of the size and the magnitude of the, of the structure, it's called a threshold structure. So there's a lot of different fees. We'd have a hundred and fifty dollar minimum plan review fee to obviously review plans of that, of that scope, the scope, and, you know. So I mean, there's, I don't know, I'd have to go, you know, write the numbers.
No, no, I realize, I wasn't asking to make the, I thought, I was wondering maybe if somebody on your side had done that on a, on a-
Well, that's why I, I just ran it for, you know, a, a simple ten thousand dollar deck. I mean, you know, we get twenty times as many ten thousand dollar decks as we get fifteen million dollar affordable housing projects.
Yeah, I'm just curious of what a guy like William Wallach will say, you know, since he's developing these kinds of multimillion dollar projects. I would just like to know that he's not going to come back and say, are you out of your mind, city council, for approving this, that's all, you know, or what he's-
I mean, I've spoken with William about it, um, I don't, and he didn't seem to express any concerns, but I mean, I can certainly speak with him again, um, but he, uh, I mean, it's, it's all revenue for the city. I mean, it's, he's economically developing the city, it's-
Would this, would this make it harder for him to get these projects developed, knowing it's going to be that much more expensive for you?
I mean, we can always work with the developer.
Yeah.
On, I mean, the, the fees are basically at my discretion. Um, the high school, middle school, we didn't charge any city fees because obviously it was a public funded.
I didn't know that, okay. All right, so there's latitude there to attract business, okay.
There is, um, for a private developer, you know, again, and I, I would defer to the mayor just as I did with the permit fees for the, um, for the high school, middle school.
Okay.
What do you want to do here?
Okay, fair enough.
Thanks.
So I think, Kevin, I appreciate the research you did and the question that was asked by councilman Cavenero. You know, you, you've looked at other municipalities, we want to be fair in terms of any increase to our residents and businesses, so, does it need any more tweaks before?
Yeah, I don't think it needs any more tweaks. As I said, the substantive stuff in the existing ordinance is in the proposed new ordinance, just maybe in different places. Um, the, the really big change, as Kevin pointed out, is the, is the fee structure. How the fees are going to be calculated.
Yeah, it's not a whole lot more money, it's just the way that it's written on the paper, it's just a little bit more streamlined and, you know, easy to follow along with. It's a little bit, yeah, I mean, and, and that's the whole idea, is every little bit adds up, and over time, it's going to generate, you know, going to build up.
We don't want to discourage people from improvements of their property.
No.
Uh, by, by fees, but I think you've done your work in terms of what's reasonable and comparative to other municipalities. So I'm going to look to the, you know, ordinance committee to see whether or not you want to move this um, from a discussion to a vote or a public, to move it to the council for a public hearing.
Yeah, I, I think, there's nothing I can add to this conversation. I mean, this is really specific to a certain set of things, and these guys know the business, and I don't. And, and if this is their recommendation, I say, move it forward and see what, you know.
We don't get to see you come to our committee very often, so.
You can come to the public hearing.
You definitely want to come to the public hearing, please. Um, so I, I look for a motion to move the proposed ordinance.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
And, um, approved. Heather, can we look at potentially a date to put it on the council agenda for a public hearing? Are you around? That would be important.
I think so at this point, I mean, I don't, nothing comes to mind.
All right. We'll request that it have a public hearing at the council following this meeting. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, number six, the discussion on chapter one fourteen dash two, citation procedure and fines for zoning violation.
This, this should be pretty quick and easy. So one fourteen dash two, and I did do the showing the strikeouts and the changes. So the, the big change is in subparagraph C. Um, the first change is just changing the word citation to violation because really it's the violation we're talking about. The citation is just the procedural vehicle for enforcing the, you know, the fine for the violation. Um, the problem we had with our current ordinance stops with one hundred and fifty dollars per day. And the statute allows it to be one hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I'm sorry, it just says a hundred and fifty dollars, it doesn't say per day.
Okay, you're adding that.
We're adding the per day, so the statute allows it to be a hundred and fifty dollars per day. We have had attorneys raise that issue saying the ordinance doesn't say per day because Nate would try to issue a, a citation that did it per day, it didn't say per day. And, um, my conclusion was those lawyers were correct, that the only amount we could charge was a hundred and fifty dollars, period, for each violation. So the main part of that change is to add the per day language. So it, it'll increase, you know, as the violations occur, and this is for zoning, zoning violations, not like, not in the law. Every day, it's a hundred and fifty dollars every day, instead of really at this point, and if we went to court, we would have lost, would be a flat hundred and fifty. So, so that's the-
Slap on the wrist to a court clerk.
So that's the main change in that section.
I, I totally-
Uh, and then further down in subparagraph F, that change is simply to correct us on misspelling.
All right, so-
That's it.
With that, um, is there any further discussion, or is there will of the committee to move it for a vote?
No, as far as I'm concerned, we asked to put some- No, as far as I'm concerned, we have to put some teeth in this and these are fangs and I'm, I'm fine with it.
Wow.
Well, it, you know, per day.
Move it as a motion.
Yes, I, I. What's the language for this, move it to city council and move we.
Public hearing?
Present this to city council for approval.
And a public hearing.
And a public hearing, yes.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, move on.
Most of the operators motion I ever made. Thank you, man.
So the next one is kind of similar. This one is the citation procedures and fines for inland wetlands and watercourses. And it really was more of a a structural change to the subparagraph D because you'll see the very last line there said, the maximum fine for a violation under this article shall not exceed a thousand dollars. But we, it was confusing. We thought it was clearer to move that limitation up to the first sentence. So again, changing citation to fine because it's, the dollar amount is for the fine. It's a hundred dollars, that one also didn't say per day. So per day up to a maximum of a thousand dollars for each separate violation. So there could be more than one zoning violation on a property. It could, you know, it could be in violation of different sections of the zoning code. And this also authorizes the zoning report, or the inland wetlands officer consider each violation as a separate violation that can be assessed a fine of a hundred dollars per day. But again, under state statute is a maximum of a thousand dollars. So even though it's per day, ten days, you're done, right? Ten days, you're at a thousand dollar threshold and that's as far as you can go.
Any other questions from the ordinance committee meetings, members?
Is there, the person being issued this, what recourse do they have to challenge the validity of it?
They can take an appeal.
Is that, is there language in here?
Yeah, so par, subparagraphs G and H, they can admit liability and just pay the fine.
Or?
Or they can request a hearing. And the hearing officer then will hear them and then assess a penalty, assess the fines. But then you have to go to the superior court. You take the hearing officer's decision, you go to the superior court and you file that decision with eight dollars. And the court issues a judgment which you then can enforce against the property.
Okay. And can the, can the person do it themselves or do they have to? Now, I, I'm concerned if somebody gets hit with this, they don't have the money to really challenge it.
They mean hire a lawyer, hire a lawyer.
They don't, that's all I'm asking, they can do it themselves, okay, then I'm fine with it.
And a lot of it, though, depends how complicated it is. You know, right now, there, there are some really interesting, complicated cases
Yeah.
going on in that land use office and, you know, the, the property owners involved.
One more time.
Really needed a lawyer, they needed a lawyer.
Oh, here we go, okay, never mind, I see, it's very clear here.
All right, so this is our discussion at this point. Do we want? So I'm going to ask the public, we are in a subcommittee, ordinance committee, if you could just be patient with us. We're almost completing our meeting, thank you. So do I have a motion to move this for a public hearing and?
I'll make that motion.
Then I second.
Okay, Molly made the motion, Paul seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
So we'll look at another date, can we do it on the same date, Heather? Can we do it on the same date? Are there any other business by committee members?
Not by me, no.
The only, the only question I had here, so you're going to do both of those as one public hearing or those are two separate public hearings?
Two.
So three all total?
Well, yeah, sure, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, yep.
All right.
That's what I thought.
So look for a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, meeting adjourned.
Okay, let me call this regular meeting of the city council and WPCA to order for the record. This is a regular meeting, today is Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have all six council members attending in person. For the record, it is six thirty-five P M. And before I open the meeting to the agenda, could we kindly pledge the flag? Okay, so item number one on the agenda is a public comment. Before I call for a motion, I just checked with the council members because there are so many members of the public in attendance. I would just ask that you limit your speaking points to three minutes. And I'm looking to the city clerk to be our timekeeper, okay? So let me call for the motion. I need a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So move.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, we're open to the public. I don't have a sign up sheet, so just be respectful, don't trip over each other getting to the podium. Anyone wishing to make comment?
I'm Mike in Panic, I live at forty-five Smith Street. I'm here to comment on the vote to move the polling place from.
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned also, I, I, did you state your name for the record?
Yes, I did.
Thank you, I am so sorry, I was.
He even stated my address.
Thank you.
His address, yeah.
Anyway, I'm here to comment on the vote tonight to move the polling place from the Armory to the Vogel Wetmore School. It's my understanding that this is going to be conducted in violation of Connecticut general statute nine dash one sixty-nine. Thank you.
Nine dash one sixty-nine, no subsection? Okay, thank you. The floor is open.
Tom Scoville, three five six West Side Lane, Torrington. I am the Republican Town Committee Chairman, I should make that known. So I attended a bipartisan meeting on December fourth of last year with Jacques Williams, the Democrat Register of Voters, Stephen Iveyne, the Democratic Town Committee Chairman, Fred Jury, the Republican Register of Voters, Corporation Counsel, City Clerk, Assistant City Clerk, to discuss the issues that arose election day in Torrington. We discussed the events that occurred at the Armory, the long lines that stretched back to the gates of Fusionist Parking Lot, the frustrated voters, some who left without voting. I witnessed one lady with a walker falling on the ramp in the line with the rest of the voters. Everyone at that meeting that day agreed that the Armory was not appropriate to handle that volume of voters. It, it is not handicap accessible. Every other one of our polling places meets handicap standards. There is not enough parking to handle the voters and poll workers. The bipartisan group that day recommended Vogel Wetmore as an alternative. Schools are typically closed on election day, there is handicap parking adjacent to the school. The entrance, there, there's parking adjacent to the school and a large lie across on Mason Street. It is within the district, so many voters can also walk from the nearby neighborhoods. There's ample room so voters can line up inside the building instead of out in the weather. It has been used as a polling place in the past. We also discussed if, if we start in twenty twenty-five in a lower volume election year, voters will be used to voting at Vogel Wetmore by the night, next high volume presidential election in twenty twenty-eight. The premise that this change will suppress turnout of Democratic voters is false. Republicans have carried this district for several municipal elections. You have to also take into account the effects of early voting. In the twenty twenty-four sixty-fifth district race, Joe Canito carried the Armory of the four, carried the Armory by ninety votes. Of the four polling places, it was his highest margin. He carried same day voting districts by a combined two hundred eighty votes. Yet he only won by fifty-four votes because Michelle Cook carried early voting and absentee votes by two hundred twenty-six votes. It's the R T C who have the burden to educate their, thank you.
Thank you to the timekeeper. And again, I'll just remind, state your name for the record, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Carbone and city council members. My name is Tamara Christensen, I live on Wilson Avenue. I am the Torrington Democratic Town Committee Chair and I hope you've had a chance to enjoy this lovely weather today. I love the voter turnout, I love the turnout tonight. I'm amazed to see so many people in Torrington involved in the civic process. The D T C is concerned about voter access. We are perplexed by the process that has led us to this meeting tonight. I hope that when we reach the third agenda item, there will be some light shed upon what actually happened and why something as simple as changing a polling location has been shrouded in mystery. Will one or the, one or the other party actually be advantaged by a change? Maybe a change will help our Democratic candidates, we don't know. Our primary concern is not to disenfranchise voters, any voters. This is such a last minute change, we know that getting the word out about something this important could take months and we only have days. We are concerned that the memo from Melissa Russell dated August twenty-eighth contained a list of what the registrar's office can do to alert voters if there is a location change. There is a very huge difference between can and shall. The list suggests that they can write press releases, they can post on social media and maybe even TikTok. They can send postcards to every household in the district. They can place signs in gathering places and at the Armory. They can hire someone to redirect traffic on election day and even have a printed map. They can have a shuttle bus to bring voters from the Armory to the school. Our concern is wish of these expensive and time consuming cans are going to become shells. All voters need to be alerted. I hope that the registrar's office shall do all those things and more. Many people without children do not even know where Vogel Wetmore is and it is located in a maze. Every motor, every voter needs to be reached because every vote matters. I hope you will make the decision that leads to the highest voter turnout, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, I'm Carrie Combs, one five three Sharon Avenue here in Torrington. I'm a voter in District Six. Is it appropriate to ask for a point of information? Is it within order?
Not during this portion, but if you put your question on the table when there's discussion among the council, they could probably answer.
I will wait for them, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carrie, Ms. Combs. Yeah, if you state your record, your question into the record and then, then the council will be able to answer, sorry.
I'm curious as to why when I look up on the Secretary of State's voter registration for my address, it already shows my polling location as Vogel Wetmore when it's my understanding that this has not yet been approved by city council due to the disagreement between the clerks. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry for the confusion.
My name is Rachel Harold, one twenty Chamberlain Street. To echo what Tamara said, I do believe that changes could have been made eons ago, Mr. Scoville said that it was in December when it was discussed first. It is now September and we're just bringing this up just months before the election, I don't think that's fair. I used to vote at the Armory, it was never an issue before. And all of a sudden, there are all these issues and problems at the Armory. And I think that has one common cause and that is the registrar clerk, Melissa.
I would ask that there be no assessment or evaluation of public employees in this comment.
Okay.
But I appreciate your, your comments.
So it just seems to me that it's moving really fast and without a real clear plan as to how to notify all the voters of this change. And quite honestly, I don't think it's possible at this short date. I was poll standing at Torrequor last year, there were people there who had their polling place changed two years prior to Torrequor or from Torrequor to somewhere else. They had no idea, two years later. So I'm thinking a month and a half before is a little ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. And the floor is still open for speakers.
Kathy Ross, one ten Horace Street. Two problems were cited, I did a lot of research, went online on the town website, on the city website. And I see all the letters from, or the notices, the memos. Jamie Sikora cited that the top of the ramp is slightly not ADA compliant. That and the long line and trip hazard. I've been voting at the Armory for forty-seven years and the only long line was this year when it was changed. The Armory, we always went in the front door, you have that whole vestibule empty for a line if there is any. I've never experienced a line. The information, if you had a problem, a question, you needed to do anything, was off to the side when you first went in. Then you had another thirty feet before you got to your street where you got in line to vote. There was never a long line. I never saw anybody trip, I never saw any problems. This presidential election, for some reason, it got changed and you had to enter and exit on the side door with the ramp and the stairs. It was chaos. And when you walked in the door, immediately was the information table which backed everybody up because there were a lot of people there that were changing their, had their address changed or whatever. By the time you could get to your lane, it was a mess. So I don't know, it was very, very poorly changed this year. And that was the presidential election. I'd hate to see the mayoral election be screwed up again. So I am very strongly opinionated that we keep the Armory as our voting place. I have a memo from Sergeant Baldis. He basically is saying it's up in the air, there's pros, there's cons. And his last sentence was, obviously, school will be affected, tough decisions, but you'll figure it out. So there is no strong opinions from, it seemed like, anyone that had these concerns and was in those meetings. So I'm just for the Armory staying as the voting place, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And the floor is still open for comment.
Hi, Donna Fortier, Brightwood Avenue, Torrington. I would like to address the concerns about the Armory not being ADA compliant. And the actual ADA laws are, allow a polling place to have temporary, let me just look at my words, for, allows you to have temporary solutions for polling places. It doesn't have to be ADA compliant three hundred and sixty-four days a year. And they actually, the Americans with Disabilities Act, they give you a booklet with pictures on how to fix some of the problems that you have laid out on the, in the August twenty-fifth letter. For example, the handicap ramp not being, the letter wasn't specific as to what was wrong with the ramp. We can very easily get a temporary makeshift ramp for one day. And they're rentable, they cost about sixty dollars a month to actually rent one and it would solve the problem. The front door does not have to be closed according to the ADA. People are still allowed to use the stairs as long as you have signage that points to where the ramp is. So it's a matter of putting signs there. Sorry, I'm so nervous. Also, the handicap parking seems to be an issue. All that needs to be done according to the ADA is to take three parking spots, put some cones up, make them two handicapped accessible parking spots. Or you can also, if that's not feasible, you can have a drop off location. I just think to close down a polling spot in, in this political climate that we live in is over these issues that can be very easily fixed is really not in the best interest of the voters and of our, you know, our right to vote. And I do have the booklet here with the pictures on how to solve some of those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. And the floor is still open if there are more comments.
My name is Margaret Tucker. I live on Sherwood Drive. I'm a little confused here. If it's not, if it's a public building and it's not ADA compliant, people are not allowed to go in there, correct? I'm just a little confused about this. And it was ADA compliant, I guess, when it was first built. But now it's not ADA compliant anymore. So if it's a public building and you can't go in, then why are we still doing things there? And we have public things there presently now. We have basketball, we have soccer, we have everything. I have a craft fair coming up. I don't want the building to be closed if it's not ADA compliant. So that's what my concern is.
Thank you. The floor is still open.
Hi, Stacy Whitman, 69 Barber Street. I agree with a lot of the people here who are saying that it's a little bit late notice at this point. I also think that if there needs to be a long term solution, I mean, I live right down the street from Vogel Wetmore, and all summer it's been under construction under there. So this year, people have been avoiding that area. So this year is probably a bad year to be changing the venue for accessibility to that area. There are multiple, I am down to one way to get to my house because of all the construction that's been around there. So, you know, normally I have like three or four directions that I can get to my house. I do agree that if, in the long run, it's a better venue, let's do a study and make sure that people are notified with plenty of time. But for this year, it's probably not the best idea.
Thank you. And the floor is still open.
My name is Tracy Rowe, 389 Main Street, Torrington. I've lived in Torrington for 17 years and voted here at the Armory every election since I moved here. There has never been a problem voting there. I have never witnessed long lines until last election. I agree with the person before who said it was chaos because they changed the setup. I don't have a particular problem with moving to Vogel Wetmore. It would actually be closer to my house. But I do have a problem with this change happening so fast. I wouldn't have even known about this meeting if someone hadn't sent me a copy of an email that they received. I find it really hard to believe that in the month and a half that we have to notify people, or if it's even that long, that you are going to be able to notify every single voter. And I kind of find this whole situation a little bit suspect. Thank you.
No, I appreciate you. The floor is still open.
Good evening. My name is Liz Silphone, 44 Clove Court. I just want to say, I think the change in the venue, it, two things. It's too short notice to make a change. And I think the parking area around Vogel Wetmore is not as good as the Armory. And the other thing, I did go to the state, and someone already mentioned this, the state website, and it said that District Six was already going to Vogel Wetmore. And I thought tonight's meeting was that Vogel Wetmore, you know, we were deciding that. The other thing that came to mind when I looked at that was that it mentioned the middle school. I happened to be at the tour of the Torrington High School. My sister's 50th anniversary. And they did a tour of the Torrington High School and the middle school. And where is the new polling? Is it at the middle school up by Bishop Donnelly? Or is it at the middle school on Major Best Drive? And so I just think there's confusion. And I think in this climate that we're in right now, people need to know where they can vote. And it's different than what the Torrington website says compared to the state website, Secretary of State. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The floor is still open.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rodrigo Del Amora. I'm at 33 Millard Street. Been a resident here with my wife since 2023. So we're newer here, but we still feel a need to get involved with the community. I just worry about, I'm just a practical person. What are the costs associated with moving a polling location 45 days out? Some of these solutions that have been proposed, like shuttling, they sound wonderful on paper. Is it going to end up costing a lot more than trying to find, as someone pointed out very helpfully, a temporary solution that would comply with the ADA in the short term and allow us to keep the polling place that everyone's already familiar with? So that would just be my, my input is that, you know, should we not be looking to find the solution that makes the most sense financially as well? Thank you.
Thank you. The floor is still open.
Good evening. I'm Susan Pantley, 26 Lake Drive. As a voter, I want to vote in my usual polling place. I feel good knowing that I know where I am going and where I am going to park. Moving the voting location to the Vogel Wetmore School creates problems. There is street and parking projects going on. Making changes at the last minute adds confusion and shows a lack of organization. We remember last November's chaotic election. Is the city of Torrington trying to make it harder to vote? My voice, my vote is my voice, and I want it to be counted. Last November, not all voters' voices were heard. Thank you.
The floor is still open for comment.
Brian Coring, Franklin Street resident well over a decade and a poll worker for over five years. I've worked in the various places, including the Armory. I've worked in Copark and other locations throughout town and gone through various positions, including moderator. So I'm familiar with the process that we're talking about here. The voter that you just heard from represents the majority of what we hear at every election. They feel strongly that their voting place should be set and that there should be no confusion. And what happens, and we deal with this every year, every election, what happens when there's a redistricting, such as after the last census, is that we have confusion in voting places in the following election and then in the following election after that. This goes on and on, and we need to reassure voters that we're not trying to take their vote away from them or inconvenience them, but sometimes we have to send them to the other end of town. So what I'm getting at with this explanation is that, while the points that Mr. Scoville raised seem to make common sense, I wasn't aware of and haven't seen this study that was supposedly done in December. I think it might have been publicized. It might have been a better procedure. And the local residents might have been made aware of it. And to make a long story short, I think that doing this less than two months before the election is a fool's errand. You're going to create all sorts of problems at the polls. I don't disagree that there may be better locations. I happen to know that what went on at the Armory, and it was chaotic. I was not present, but I've heard all about it from people that were there, including workers. What went on there was largely an equipment failure problem. As most of you know, the equipment was at the end of its cycle of life. I'm hoping that by this election, the changes will have been made. I know we'll hear more about that. But, and it was a presidential year. And other various changes apparently were made. I wasn't even aware that the doors were locked. So I'm here to urge you, as a poll worker and as a resident of over a decade, not to make this change on the cusp of an election, especially a significant election like the mayoral pick. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the council? And just because I know there's some reluctance, I'm going to call it one more time. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time on this matter? Or on any matter on the agenda? I, so Jacques, can I call you up when it's, when we open the matter for discussion? And that way, as, you won't be held to a three minute. We won't gavel you out.
Good luck holding him to the floor.
Yeah, goodness gracious. Okay. All right, I kind of feel like I need to ask one more time. Anybody else? Is there anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Okay, Mr. Manichia.
I'm Manicha, 531 Charles Street, Torrington. I believe that moving the voting location from the Armory to Vogel Wetmore should be done. If Vogel Wetmore is a better location overall, especially for those voters with disabilities. The Armory used to be my voting location for many years, and I've, and thought it was not a great location. There is one entrance for people with disabilities. If something happens at entrance on voting day or right before, then this would cause even greater chaos. At least Vogel Wetmore has multiple handicap accessible entrances that would be available, not only during an emergency, but also to alleviate high volumes of voters if the turnout was high. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manichia. And I know a couple of people came in a little late, so I'm going to call it again, and that's it. Anybody else from the public that wishes to address the council?
Christine Carroll, 389 Main Street, Torrington. I understand that maybe there are problems with the place where we vote. I just think it's too soon. If you were talking about this in December, why wasn't that change made in December when you could let all of us know? If it wasn't for the Democratic Town Committee, I would not have known about this meeting tonight. And I thank them for sending out that letter. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. We're good? We're good. I'm going to move on. All right, let's move into item number two on the agenda. I will entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from September 2nd, 2025.
So moved.
I heard Councilwoman Oliver and Councilwoman Iven. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call it. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, now we're going to move into item three. And I've left this vague because I didn't know where the council wanted to go with this. So the motion I'm calling for is for a discussion regarding the relocation of City's Sixth District polling place from the Armory to Vogel Wetmore.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Irwin, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Any decision of the council on voting on this matter would be a sub motion to this, okay? Is everyone clear? We're good with this? Okay, good. All right, I'm going to call the motion again. This is for a discussion on relocation. All in favor? Any opposed? This motion carries. All right. Mr. Williams, did you want to speak to the council on the matter of the relocation?
And I'd like to thank you, Mayor, the council, everyone here in attendance, people that are listening and viewing by social media, and to my colleagues. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you on this issue. You've heard a lot of the concerns already from the voting public. And I feel like my responsibility as the Democratic voter, registrar of voters, is to ensure that we conduct a fair, credible, and safe election. It's also my goal, and I think the objective and goal of the department, to make sure that everyone has trust in those elections. I'm not going to keep you that long, but I just want to make sure that when you make this vote this evening, that you keep those attributes in mind. When we had a discussion back in December, as the RTC, Mr. Silville brought up, we did discuss making a move to Vogel Wetmore. But the meeting in general was about the postmortem analysis of what happened at the precinct in District Six. And with those conversations, I think that, at least from my vantage point, of course, we want to look at viable options where we can increase accommodations for the voting public. Between December and today, a lot has happened, including some health issues that were experienced by some of the people in our department. Not making that an excuse, but what I am suggesting is that we didn't have the proper opportunity to devise a plan, come up with a strategy, a cogent strategy that we could deliver to the public with trust, with confidence, that would ensure that everybody could get behind this proposed move. That didn't happen, to my satisfaction. And I hate to say this, but my biggest fear is that if this is done, not that it's a major situation, but with everything that's going on with this new department, my concern is that we will not be able to fulfill our obligation to conduct that election. With one less thing on our plate to deal with, I feel a little more confident that we can get the job done and I can get some sleep at night. So these are the concerns that I think are very viable concerns and concerns that, especially as Stephen and Molly embark upon their next step here as being their next possible mayor, you would want this department working its best to be objective, to be of value, and to be making sure that we can provide the best service to the community and our voters as we possibly can. That is my concern. I hope you take those concerns into consideration when you're making this vote. And at the end of the day, when all this is said and done, we can all sleep better at night, knowing that we did our very, very best to make sure that we had a credible, fair, and safe election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Jury, did you want to add anything?
I'm Fred Jury. I'm the Republican Registrar of Voters here in Torrington. I want to thank everyone for their input tonight, especially the members of the public. Several good ideas were expressed, and unfortunately, we weren't able to take action on this matter any sooner than tonight. I want to point out to the City Council that being out of compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act leaves us liable to someone filing a complaint with the federal government. And believe me, they've got a lot more resources than the city of Torrington has. And God forbid, common sense should prevail, but I've seen a number of people stumble at the Armory during the voting process because there's this tarp on the floor. And as I told you at the last time we discussed this, I have a serious concern that a resident of Torrington will be injured by tripping and falling at the Armory. I urge you to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and I urge you to keep the residents of Torrington safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. And I know, do you think that the public that's viewing from Zoom is able to? Okay, all right. So before I call up the clerk to answer any questions about the process from just that meeting on December 4th to this point in time, I thought maybe it would be best to open the floor to the council for questions. There was a memo. There was a memo with answers to questions that were posed at the last council meeting. There were the memo regarding the ADA compliance of the ramp. And yes, I did also include, because I did reach out to Sergeant Baldis with regard to the parking issues, and not just the ADA compliant parking spaces, but also the number of parking spaces. And for the members of the public that did not get a chance to go on the agenda and access the memo which was attached to the agenda, I would just like to remind the public of a few important events that have occurred over the last couple of years. First, up until 2023, the Armory building was owned by the state of Connecticut. It wasn't until June of 2023 that the state of Connecticut turned that building over to the city of Torrington. And while we did use that building for recreational purposes and for a polling location, we did not own it and we do not have the record of when the ADA compliant ramp was installed. But we do know from, from a period of time during the COVID vaccine and testing period that the ramp became a serious question. Redistricting of the state representative districts occurred in 2022. So I, I think there was one, the one gentleman who said he was a poll worker. He'd indicated that there was a change in the voting locations for some voters who were subjected to that redistricting. So that is something else that is changed in the most recent years. With the new location, excuse me, last year with the new election laws, redistricting, and the heightened attention about increasing voter participation and voter safety, in November of 2024, the registrars and their clerk toured each polling location in the city to assess accessibility and polling site safety concerns. So it wasn't just about access to the building, there were safety concerns as well. During the tours of the polling locations, concerns had been expressed about accessibility and safety. And it, though those issues were identified too late in the process to make any changes to that polling location in 2024. Those discussions and of those identified shortcomings did occur on December 4th of 2024 in my office. It was part of the whole, let's take a look at what happened in 2024. Let's review the processes, the questions, and the concerns. And it was in that meeting that the concerns about the Armory, ADA accessibility via the ramp, via parking, the heavy doors in the front of the building, hence the relocation of entrance and exit on the side of the building, all came to light. And that was when the consensus around the room was that we should investigate, and by we, I mean the registrars, should investigate moving that polling location to the Vogel Wetmore school. As you see the council members in Sergeant Baldis's report, he's indicated there are approximately 63 spaces at Fuscinich. There are about 43 parking spaces in the PAC group parking area. That was another change that happened most recently. The parking area directly across the street on Co-Place from the Armory was sold. And Hartford Healthcare established offices and an urgent care center in the location of that parking lot. So that parking lot has very limited accessibility. It is a private lot with very limited accessibility. I asked Sergeant Baldis to look at the parking. He did identify that parking at the Armory was a bit more of a challenge. Parking at the Vogel Wetmore school was far more convenient with over 116 spaces in the Mason Street parking lot, 43 parking spaces within the Vogel Wetmore parking lot, and a number of ADA accessible parking spaces. One of the things that he did not identify in this email, but did communicate to me afterwards was also the lighting of the parking. At Fuscinich Park, it is dark. You know, and as we all know, with the change of time, there are a number of voters that are parking at the Fuscinich parking lot in the dark and walking up to the Armory. There's no denying that the pros in this memo, I did list the pros and cons as, you know, as they were being communicated to me. You know, the overarching pro of staying at the Armory is familiarity. Voters know the location. The number of cons are significant, but they have existed for a period of time. The pros of moving the polling location that have been communicated to me were the increase in availability of parking, over 160 parking spaces, all lit. ADA compliance for building accessibility and parking, ample room for queuing voter lines inside the building, and that there is a generator on site in the event there is a cessation of power for any reason. And of course, the con in that situation is there's a short period of time to notify voters of a relocation if it is decided that it is going to be relocated. I think that essentially answered the questions that I heard at the last council meeting with the exception of a voter or a party stronghold at any location. So I did also take a little time to go to the Secretary of State's office and download polling results over the last several elections, the mayoral, city clerk, I think to the treasurer, city council, state representatives. And I would say that the data, all of which has been provided to the council members, doesn't support that there is any particular party stronghold. I would say municipal elections were more favorable to a Republican vote, but the state representative election did favor the Democratic Party.
I, I will respectfully disagree with that. This polling location has 35% of all registered voters in our city. 38% of that are registered Democrats. 32% registered Republicans. So yes, the majority is Democratic. The, the voting results are really who they voted the candidates.
Correct.
But the actual registrations prove that, yes, they are Democratic lead in that case.
And one could argue that it's an unaffiliated voter also.
Unaffiliated have also.
But these numbers are from the Secretary of State's, these are official election results. And to the question that was, or the point that was made that there appears to be a stronghold, I would say these numbers don't support that statement.
Well, we're going to prove that different this year.
Okay, so. So I, for those of the members of the public or anybody that's online, which is why I was asking if they could still hear me. I know that, you know, to read these documents that were provided to the council members, you actually have to hit the hyperlink for this agenda item, and all of those documents will be populated for you. So the council members have seen it, hopefully, and read it. And I'm just going to open the floor to the council. And if there is a sub motion to the motion to discuss, I'll entertain that motion. All right, floor is open to the council members.
Well, if I could lead off, I, I did not appreciate our September 2nd meeting with this discussion with no public comment. I believe voters of this city, voters in District Six have a say. That, that's why I appreciate everyone that came and spoke here today, so thank you. This is a very important part of our civic dialogue. And the way it was managed in the last meeting, sneaking in this agenda item at the end of the meeting with no public comment available was wrong. We should have had it upfront, approve a new agenda item at the beginning of the meeting, not at the end of the meeting. So we can include that discussion for the public to comment. Seeing that, the data, the info that we've been provided, we still don't have a plan to change location. Only pros and cons, that's not a plan. We need a plan, we need a floor plan, how we're going to arrange that and execute that. I still do not see that plan. We're here today because our registrars disagreed with that decision. And it's a funny thing that we did not agree as a city council to take on this task yet. Yet, we find a Department of Motor Vehicle, Secretary of State has changed that, looks like going back into August. So everyone that has a license change or registration change has been notified Vogel Wetmore is a polling location for them. So I, I think we, we have a real problem with just that. How did that come about? Reading into the Voting Rights Act, we, we have many more problems just in the districting of our city. So it's not just District Six. We, we have to look at fixes to District One and Four. They are not continuous districts. So who's voting at the middle school? We have one district on the east side, and the other part of that is on the west side, a little strange. So we, we have a few of those gerrymandered areas within our city. We should probably look at how we should correct that action so that we, if the Voting Rights Act has a saying, the districts have to be continuous, they should be at least near each other, bordering, touching in some respect. They are not in our city. So I, I say we need to first conform to the Voting Rights Act. The ADA, it's funny that we see a report now from Jamie Sikora, but the previous registrar memo said that it was out of compliance, but there was no ADA report to verify that fact. So it's now included in our city council discussion, but just created just this past week. I, I'd like to ask Jamie, when we say the ramp is 0.39 degrees off, is that an inch on a 10-foot space? Can you explain the issues with the ramp itself?
And just so that the public is clear, the issues of ADA compliance on the ramp were discussed with the registrars and the clerk. It wasn't until the meeting, the last council meeting, where all of this information was coming to the council that we determined we needed something in writing. So this late report is not, was not meant to disenfranchise you of information. The information had been communicated to the registrars. I would also just, before you add.
We've had significant repairs on this building this past year.
Yes.
If any non-compliance, we should have gone through a building permit process, and that should have required an ADA compliance report on these issues. And if that was not created, and we have issues with the building that you're saying is a liability issue, which one is it?
Got it.
It was no issue before the September 2nd meeting, but now it was an issue. So can you help explain this, Jamie?
Yes, Jamie Sikora, Facilities Manager for the city. The repairs of the building have been mostly lighting, so not anything to do with ADA. It's been some HVAC repairs, nothing to do with ADA. I was asked to do a walkthrough to check the site. During that walkthrough, one section of the ramp is the 0.39 degrees off, just on the slope. It's over a 13-foot section, so it's actually overall about an inch off, only on the top. There are also small little damages that were done from when that was a vaccine, a vaccine site for COVID. The hospital did some repairs, they didn't take. That was already in our plan, it's actually getting fixed and was already getting fixed before for the lower section where there's some chips to be repaired on the ramp. That should be done in the first week of October. So I had said to Melissa during the checklist, you can list this, but this is already planned to be fixed. That's when we realized the top is just off. You have to have a slope of 1 and 12. The top is a slope of just out of 1 and 11. So we already have in talks with contractors that we have on, on call to see what can be done to regrade that. I don't know if it's a frost heave, it's only the very, very top 13-foot section. So that's what came up. So there is no, there was no formal complaint, there was no formal report done. It was just, look at this, we put levels on everything, and that's when we deemed the top is just out of spec.
Didn't we repay, replace the 7,500 square foot gym floor there?
Correct.
Okay.
There's no permit required for that if you're not changing structure. And we didn't, we ripped up the old hardwood and put down new hardwood, the underlayment was fine.
Okay. And would you say that the ramp repairs are maintenance issues? It's not really a violation of ADA, it's simply a.
At this point now is, is a maintenance issue, and I would say there's no imminent danger to anybody being one degree off. It's just out of compliance.
But we, we have some elected officials saying that their hair is on fire, and my God, we, you know, should we be occupying the building? So is it a maintenance issue, or is it, oh my God, run from the building?
It's a maintenance issue.
Great, thank you.
So.
Yeah.
Well, I, I have more. I'm on a filibuster roll here, but I, I'm good with you, Jamie, thank you very much.
Well, just to reiterate, so what you're saying is that, for all intents and purposes, that really isn't a safety issue for adults using that ramp one day to vote?
No, it's just out of compliance. If somebody.
Out of compliance?
Yeah.
Is it perfectly safe for, for little children to use it for their Halloween walkarounds?
It's out of compliance, that's all I can say, is it's out of ADA compliance. If, if somebody gets hurt.
You don't feel compelled to shut down the building for use for all the.
You don't have to shut it down if it's not imminent danger per ADA. But it's, you know, and we are, I do have a plan in place. I just can't get to it fast enough to have it fixed. I'm waiting on quotes to come in.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. No, I have some other comments for sure, but if you want to spread it around.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm good, good with Jamie, so thank you very much. I do want some numbers, so if we did research on this move, what is the cost of notification? The cost of move, cost of police officer at both locations, cost to go to Vogel School? We should have a number before making a decision on what is the additional cost making a move at this time. I, I believe most of the public comments that it's late. It's too late to make this move this time of year. So we, we need a good plan in place, we need to execute properly. We need to understand what is exactly the plan to make the move. We should have a diagram of the rooms, or if we're going to stay at the Armory, we should have a diagram of the Armory. We're going to come in this door, go out that door, use the ramp. We can't have the indoor and outdoor and handicap door all being the same door. We need to see that plan with just, we, in our postmortem review of everything that went wrong at the Armory with three tabulators going wrong, we ran out of pens of all things. The entranceway exits were not appropriate. We had someone tripped on the mats, that, that's really not a fault of the mats. The mats on the floor, we, we need to put mats on the floor in every voting location. So we, we need that plan in place to actually decide, in my mind, on making this change. And thinking about the late notification at this point is really wrong to undertake. So I, I just want to question a lot of things like that before making a determination. And if we could have registered clerks speak to that, or registrars, if we know the dollar amounts if, from this assessment, and how we could correct all the issues that we realized at the Armory last year. Just splitting the alphabet of the street names was done incorrectly. It was an 80/20 split, so it created a very long queue in one of the lines to just get a ballot. We, we need to understand of, you know, who's lining up and how we could properly better manage all the things that went wrong, not just the location. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Kevin Arrow, you're at the floor.
You want to?
Yeah, but I can.
Okay. Yeah. My concern, my concern here, for one thing, I've been elected official for over 20 years now, and as a Democrat. And it was my impression, well, it was, it was, it's actually my sworn statement, if you will, that during all that time and all the elections that I have been through, on election night, when the Democrats gather in their headquarters, Republicans gather in their headquarters, and you put up the tote board, and everybody's tracking the results coming in from all the polling places. and you put up the tote board and everybody's tracking the results coming in from all the polling places. They can't see me?
You need to talk right into the microphone. I think you might be far away.
See, okay. All right. So in all that time, when the results would come in, I just know that certainly, certainly more toward the beginning of my, my career, the more experienced politicians in the room would always say, don't make, don't rush to judgment on whether we're winning or losing. Don't wait until the Armory comes in. Wait until the Armory comes in. For Democrats, it was always wait until the Armory comes in, the results, okay? Because they did tend, if we were, if the Democrats were going to win, more likely than not, they're going to win at the Armory. Because other polling places in Torrington, particularly east of that town, clearly skewed Republican. So that was how it always broke down. I see recently, so these numbers currently, as far as the actual people who voted, show more of a 50/50 split. So I want to acknowledge that that fact is correct. I assume is correct. And therefore, it doesn't necessarily support what used to be the case in Torrington. However, my general feeling is that it is absolutely wrong to move, to move off the Armory. The reason being that the whole goal of a registrar, the whole goal of those responsible for hosting and holding an election is to make the voting places as easily accessible, as little of a problem as possible to the voting public, okay? We want to get every, as many people as we can into and out of those polling places with the least amount of disruption. What happened at the Armory a year ago was a result of our committee, our Department of Registrars, making some very questionable, and in my opinion, very wrong decisions based on, for the first time, in my recollection, that building has been in place since John Kennedy. That was a polling place when John Kennedy was president, okay? That's how far back this goes. And in all that time, I don't think anyone made the extraordinary decision to lock the front doors, okay? The footpath through that polling place, like the footpath through any polling place, is designed to quickly move people into the voting machines. They get checked in and then out, okay? That building was ideal for doing that because we had those large front doors. And then we had those extremely efficient side doors, which both got people out of the building. And it was, there was a dedicated disability ramp, okay? Where the polling, where the actual machines for people with disabilities was right there at the door, okay? It was extremely efficient. And for 62 years, there was never a problem. Suddenly, we have some new people calling the shots and they decided to lock the doors to drive all the people, all the voters, both into and out of the same exits. It was a formula for chaos. And it was foot traffic chaos that was not created by the building, you know? It was not the building's fault. It was the humans who are responsible for hosting our elections, for holding our elections and planning them. It was their bad decision-making that created this, okay? Number one. Number two, as far as parking, I've, for as long as I can remember, parked at the park gate and I walked 50 feet. I can handle that. I've heard arguments made that the front steps are too dangerous for people to walk up, especially older people. I don't know. I think Torontonians still know how to walk up steps. Every, 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 every older person like me, I've never heard them say, it's a challenge. I remember how to walk up steps. Because we do. We're still good at that, okay? So that is not an issue. You had, you had chaos with the voting machines that were chosen to go. The only place I know, right? Isn't that the only polling place that had actual failed voting machines?
No.
I thought so. I thought, wasn't it the only place that had a failed generator?
No.
I thought those were unique to the Armory back last November.
No. No, I'm getting a, I'm getting a head shake. No, that, not the only polling location, but-
Okay, well, the city of Torrington, 38,000 people, it seems like we should, we have multiple departments that deal with generators on a daily basis, 24/7. It seems like the process of putting a decent generator in a building, you know, should, it's not, I mean, I think we could go to the high school and find people who could do that very efficiently. So that's not an issue. I, if we want to have the fairest, least questionable arrangement for voting in this important election, use the Armory this year. Go back to the way it has been originally used. Open the front doors. Let people exit the side doors. Use the wheelchair ramp. If you have to rent, somebody suggested this. I know you can easily rent, you know, portable ramps to use for wheelchair access. And let the voters vote, you know? If, if these same people who made those core decisions last November about the Armory are allowed to actually move it to a brand-new school with a construction site, an under-construction parking situation, where the traffic flow is absolutely, the variables in that process are extraordinarily complicated. And this core group of people who so bollixed up the Armory last November to put them in charge of not only making that an appropriate voting place, but then driving all the people who will show up at the Armory on the day of and, and having them, informing them and moving them to a brand-new location, to me is astronomically more complicated and will absolutely suppress the vote. And I am all for making sure as many people can vote as easily as possible this coming election. So do not move this. That's my, that is my final decision on the matter.
Floor is open, Councilwoman Ruette.
Excuse me?
I said the floor is open, Councilwoman Ruette.
I got it now. And I love this polling vote, Kate. I never realized that I was one of the top, you know, never mind.
Oh, you're top, we were right.
So I, you know, I really appreciate, I think, the information that the mayor has provided to answer some of the questions that we had. This was a new issue for me as serving on the city council at the last council meeting. So I can only imagine, you know, I don't want to make this political. To me, this was a opportunity to review the memo from Melissa, who is making a recommendation because the two registrars were in a disagreement. So this legislative body needed to come in and make a decision on whether or not we changed the voting place. Am I correct? I'm looking at our two registrars. You don't agree. So with that, I'm all about communication. Councilman Spino, I know, is running on, you know, better communication. This is too late to change the polling place. It is unfortunate. And I'm not really doing it for accolades. I'm doing it mostly because of the responsibility I think we have as a legislative body to make a decision this soon through the election day. Is it scary? And I appreciate Mr. Jury's comment, you know, do we want to risk, you know? And we have enough lawsuits going on at this point anyway. Do we want to risk another one? But I do think if there's any opportunity at the election day to really have good communication, that would be the time at the Armory to say, next year, your new voting location will be Vogel Wetmore. I mean, it is too soon. And although I appreciate the recommendation, it's really frightening that Councilman Cavanero and I have been agreeing way too much. But it is-
It's the gray hair we share, ma'am. At least you have hair.
Age, it's, you know, whatever it is. But he has made some good points. You know, I don't know why those doors weren't open in the last election. So, you know, maybe that's a question, you know, to the registrar. It's a legitimate question. So I do feel that, again, I want to thank the mayor, who is always, you will never pull wool over her eyes. And she will look and research on every issue that comes before the council, of which I've appreciated, serving under her leadership for 12 years. I won't question her on budgets. I won't question her because I'll lose. But I do feel in this particular circumstance, it's too late. And with whatever communication we can provide, you know, for those people, I voted at the Armory for 24 years. So it was my polling place. And I have to say, it's horrible polling place, particularly for those of us who are trying to line the street, the sidewalk, competing for a space to promote our particular candidate. It's a tough polling place. It does need to change. And I would agree to that after this election, for all the reasons that, you know, have been proposed. I think about change. And I know I shouldn't go here, but I'm going to. I think of the young families whose children are in the school district at this point, who have had their schools changed multiple times, you know, in their early years. I mean, I went to Torryford School. That's, you know, there was no question that I was going to go down to Vogel Wetmore or anyone else. I think my mother would have like screamed. So I think they are dealing with a lot of change. I don't know that we need to have any more changes occur in our election process. And if anything, hopefully, go back to some of what we had before as a polling place. And then provide the communication that's, you know, essential, I think, for any change next, next election year.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just, I want to take a moment just to amplify what you heard from Councilwoman Ruette. This decision would not need to be made by this board if the registrars were in agreement. It was my understanding, prior to August or September, there was agreement. But it was only in the last several weeks that that disagreement had occurred, hence coming to this council. It wasn't withheld from the council because we were trying to, they were trying to do anything covertly. It was that there seemed to be consensus and then there wasn't. And that's why it's here now. So I do appreciate that you identified the decision belongs with the registrars until and unless they don't agree.
So can we have the question answered regarding people already having notifications?
Yes, that's, I was just gonna, I was gonna see if any of the other council members had. And then I wanted to get to Councilwoman Iveyne's points on DMV sending out notices. That's unusual, yeah. But are there other council members that have any comments this evening on this matter?
I'll just, I'll just make one. Having worked that area on election night, it's absolutely busy. And I share concerns and I may be in the minority here with people crossing the roads and whether we wait, whether you wait for the officer there to direct you or not. People are walking across it all the time. People almost get hit all the time. There are almost car accidents out there all the time. So that's just my opinion and my experience. Now, with that said, to me, Vogel Wetmore appears to be the best of all scenarios from an ADA compliance, from a lighting, from a parking availability, especially with ADA or handicap parking accessibility. It seems to make a lot of sense. I will absolutely agree with everyone here that it is way too close to make that change. The other wrinkle in this plan simply is that whole area messes, of town is a mess. You can't get down it. You can't get across it. Businesses are suffering. I know that firsthand because I closed my business as a result of the traffic being a very big contributing factor to it. I mean, it's obvious that it's just too close. It's just not the right time. And I would agree with everyone here that if we're gonna make that change, you know, let's make it after the election where we have some time to digest it and make sure that that's the right thing. I do believe that there is a tripping hazard there. I do believe that because I know people who have mentioned it. They didn't fall. They didn't, you know, eat the canvas they're walking on, thank God. But we really can't be exposing those kind of hazards to our voters or just to the public at large. So I think we need to do a better job of making sure, whatever that surface is, that it's safe and secure for all the voters that are going to traffic over it. And the idea that that, the front door was not open just seems, it was locked. Exactly. Not only was it not open, so you could just go and open it, it was locked. So there was a visual deterrent. So that just seems to be a poor decision on whomever made that. But with that said, I'm, I'll turn it over to everybody else and give my mic back. But it's just too close. And we don't need any confusion at the polls or to run shuttles. It just, it just seems that's way too complicated just to make sure that, and I'm sure that, what is it? Tenth of an inch or whatever it is?
0.39.
0.39? I mean, isn't it conceivable that we could have that fixed before election even happens?
No. No.
I mean, wouldn't it be in the best interest of everybody in the public to move that up on the list? You know, there's something else that I'm sure doesn't have that level of importance because nobody else is coming out here in this mass for any of our other maintenance and facility projects. So you know what I mean? I would just say if there's a way it can go from 68th to Third, it would be a wise public move to do that.
Yeah. If I may, the difference between 0.39 on the ramp, 0.39 over 12 feet discrepancy on the ramp versus the entire construction site at Vogel Wetmore.
Yeah.
If we're gonna, if we're, if we're gonna compare possible complications, I think the 0.39, I don't think that registers as an itch, okay? So-
No, I mean, I just agree. I just think there's too much of a confusion with that entire area of town from a traffic and accessibility perspective. You know, that's a mess that just can't be fixed right now. But the ramp we can fix, so.
Or, or not. And if the decision of the board is to use the space for this current election and work on the move over the next year, then the ADA compliance issue, you know, is not urgent.
I mean, I still think it's urgent, to be honest with you. I mean, anyone that has a disability being using that ramp may say that it is or is not. And I'm not gonna make that interpretation.
Yeah, and that's another report back to the council on what does it take, you know, reconstruction? Because we did have costs for reconstruction done during, trying to decide, you know, how to spend our ARPA funds wisely. And that is, you know, a $400,000 repair or replacement. So, but, but what I'm hearing, so I do want to give the other council members a chance to speak, Councilwoman Spino?
Yeah, I'll just keep it short. I think we're all on the same page here, at least most of us. It's too soon. We've got 40-something days until Election Day. I made it a point today to reach out to the rest of my ticket. You know, Steve and I may be at the top of our tickets, but there are other people running for office too. So it's important to get their opinion on what they thought because these are people that are going to be voting for them. And it seemed, the consensus seemed to be that we need to stay at the Armory right now. It's too soon. We don't have enough time to move. So out of, I want to say thank you, by the way, to everybody that came out and spoke tonight. It really, it's important that we hear your thoughts and your opinions on this because you guys are the voters and you're the ones that are going to be putting us in office. But out of respect for everybody's time, as I'm looking at, it's almost 8 o'clock. I would like to make a sub-motion to, I don't know, if we keep it at the Armory or not vote on this at all, which one should we do?
Well, you have to. We have to take, right.
So a sub-motion that we keep the location at the Armory.
Secondary motion. I will, I will second the secondary.
Okay.
May I speak?
Yes, please, Councilman. So I have a motion and a second. The floor is still open for comments, so please.
Okay, I just want to make the comment that in the past, I've voted at both places. There was a time when our polling district was at Vogel Wetmore and I thought it was a great place. And then we got moved to the Armory and it doubled the size of the voting population there. So it is a busy place and there's a lot of parking limitations and it can be very hectic there. But it doesn't matter to me where I vote. It's just the building. I think either building would have the same advantage for whichever side, all right? Last time, I voted early. We're having early voting again, right?
Yes.
I'm never going to vote on Election Day again. I like it here. It is so convenient. I parked out front. There was nobody, free parking out front. I was in and out in five minutes.
Yep.
Right? So, and especially if somebody has ADA concerns, this is where you should vote. Because, you know, you're definitely going to the right place because everybody's here all at once.
What did you?
And that's my-
So, thank you, Councilman Waldron. So I have a motion, but if, if I may, to the, to the motion and the second, the motion is to not change the polling location for District Six this year. Is the rest of that motion to make arrangements to move it next year?
I would support that, yeah.
Is that your motion? It stays at the Armory this year and gets moved to the- It stays at the Armory this year and gets moved to the Vogel Wetmore next year, based on the recommendation of the registrars?
Yes.
And is there consensus on the registrars that a year's notice? Because again, really, this is the registrar's decision. I mean, we can move on the motion made and then leave it to the registrars to make the decision. This is their call under any other circumstances. But I think...
Should they start over with the redstrut decision? So if we pass on it this year, should it start over with the redstrut?
Could.
Working that out for now?
It could. But to all of the excellent points that were made here this evening, it's about time. It's about the timing. And I would agree, 49 days, 48 days versus 360 days is the difference. Now, if the message is clear now that this is going to be a different location next year, not only because of an ADA ramp or ADA parking at the curb, but parking in general, the weight of those doors getting in and out of that polling location, the fact that the floor needs to be covered, and it does present a tripping hazard, are those sufficient reasons for this council to go ahead and make that decision here tonight?
Yes.
So there's a whole year to talk about it.
Yeah. I still do want to identify those issues at that location, because the public is in that building every day.
Right.
And we have a department, Park and Rec, operating out of that building. We should have that working appropriately.
Yes. So the question is to you. You made the motion. Is the motion to leave the polling place at the Armory for District 6 with the move to occur to the Vogel Wetmore School in November of 26?
Yes.
That's the motion. And to Councilman Cavanero, is that your second?
Well, one more, just a point of order. Do we have the... It's a process question. Do we have the authority to bundle those two motions together? Because ultimately, the decision next year begins with them per the state statute, right?
That's a good question.
The idea being that if a straw poll says we're in favor of it, they can then quickly find agreement. But I think we should confine the vote to this year, this vote, November 4th. We want to do it at the Armory. That would be my recommendation.
That's fine. All right.
Thank you.
I know. I'll distill the motion as soon as there's enough discussion. All right. Any other thoughts?
No.
No? All right. So the motion and the second haven't been cleared up yet. So I'm hearing that the second is not ready to move on the second part of the addition, which is to move this polling location to Vogel Wetmore, but just to move...
My suggestion would be for the person who made the motion, which would be Councilwoman Spino, to simply reword it, to just say, for this year, November 4th, the city council is voting to keep the Armory in place as District 6.
District 6, right.
Period.
Yes. And I'll make that motion that we keep the voting district, District 6, at the Armory this year for Election Day on November 4th.
Yes, and I will second that.
So I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments?
Please, God, no.
Then I'm gonna call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold on a moment. So the motion is cast. I'm sorry. It's unanimous. Were there any nays? Any nays? Motion. But I do want to get the question that Councilman Iveyne asked, or the point that he raised. Is there communication coming out of the state that that polling location has been changed? So I need my glasses.
Melissa Russell, Registrar's Clerk. A number of slings and arrows have been tossed my way, so I thought I would just give an explanation for those that I can. First of all, we are not in violation of 9-169, and I have correspondence from the state to reflect that. As for the voter lookup situation that's on the state website, and has been in the letters that are actually generated from our office, but Motor Vehicles does tell us someone made a change, and we're directed to send a letter. Most of those changes are coming from the Real ID deadline, where you have to use your full middle name, whereas beforehand, most people had given us their middle initial. So we have to send the letter regardless. So people are getting a letter saying they made a change in their voter registration. As far as why it now says Vogel Wetmore, back in July, when I first got back from medical leave, one of my first orders of business was to contact the schools, as I was told to at the December meeting, to see if the school was even available for Election Day. And it was, and I let both registrars know, and at that time, they did not raise an objection. I then went to the state to find out what we needed to do as far as making this change. And I was told by one of the staff attorneys there, again, I have email correspondence to reflect this, that as long as we are outside the 31-day window, there was no requirement on notification. However, knowing that it does take a little bit of a time to let people know that a change is being made, I changed it in the state system so that new registrants would know where they were going. At that time, in July, I thought we were all on the same page and all in agreement, because I had not heard otherwise. I had several conversations with both of the registrars, and at no time did either one of them tell me that they had an issue with making this change. Okay? We did discuss plans on how to let people know, since we didn't have to adhere to moving something within 31 days. As far as the state is concerned, and I have this in correspondence as well, they don't consider this a redistrict. It's the same district, it's a different building. It would be the same, say, if we were in a community that rented a church to have a polling place, and the church said, "We don't want to rent to you anymore," and we would have to move it. That's how the state looks at it. Okay? So I just want everyone to be assured, the council and the public, that this was not something done under a shroud of mystery. It was not something done underhandedly. At every step of the way, I contacted the state to make sure we're in compliance, and whenever possible, I got it in writing. Hold on one second, I wrote down notes. So as far as remedying that situation that's on the state lookup, when they get their information from us, by the way, they don't give us the information, they get it from us. It's fairly easy to isolate who made changes during that period of time, and just send them a postcard and let them know they will be voting at the Armory. And we can post it other places as well. Okay? So just as we would have notified them had we changed, we can notify them that we're not changing. It's not a huge deal, as far as I'm concerned. But we will take extra precaution to make sure that as many people are aware as possible. Let's see. And I just wanted to point out, Mr. Iveyne, you mentioned gerrymandering in the districts. That is the responsibility of the state legislature. I agree. The way they carve up these communities is insane sometimes, but that's a state legislature issue. They have a whole committee that meets after the census is taken, and I think they probably have some public hearings on it at that time, but it happens every 10 years. So there's not a whole lot we can do about it by law until the next census. And there are not mats in every location. The Armory is the only place where there are mats on the floor. As far as having the Armory set up and the doors, the setup was not ideal, from what I had discussed with the setup crew. They kind of did a hybrid of the way we did it before and the way I had asked them to do it this time with changing the entryway, and they left that assistant registrar table in the front. And it shouldn't be the first person you should see when you walk into a polling place are the checker table, because 99% of the people going through there are just gonna check in and vote and go on their way. But most people seeing that table there thought they had to do something at that table before they went to the checker table. And I'm gonna take responsibility for that, because I did not get a chance to check it between their setup and Election Day itself. And by the time I got there on Election Day, the first tabulator had failed, and we had some other priorities we needed to take care of in that location. The front doors, we did make a decision not to use the front doors. Was it the right decision? Some people say yes, some people say no. Those granite steps are steep and slippery. Yes, people do remember how to get up the stairs. But as someone who is newly unable to navigate a lot of things, and finds myself a little bit disabled, even though hopefully I don't look too bad, this can be a real challenge. Steep stairs with one railing can be a real challenge for people who don't outwardly have disabilities. So I wanted people to have the option to go in and use that ramp or the stairs on the side, keep everything sort of in one place. Was it the right decision? I don't know. But if we have to move it back to the front doors, we'll move it back to the front doors and just deal with it. We'll deal with the steps, we'll deal with the doors. Whatever the will of the council is, we're gonna make it work. That's what elections departments do. Let me just hold on one second, make sure that I said everything I need to say. As far as dropping people off to vote, because there's not adequate parking, that really is not in the spirit of the Americans with Disabilities Act. That act was created in the early '90s to give even people with disabilities the option of voting independently and alongside their fellow voters. To be dropped off is not voting independently. It's the same reason why we're not allowed to carry a wheelchair up a flight of stairs. That's not... It used to happen, believe it or not, it used to happen. So we're not gonna be dr... The goal isn't to say, "Well, you can just be dropped off." What if somebody's alone, and they're in a wheelchair, and they have one of those cars with the hand levers? They have to wait for someone to come out and pick them up and move their car for them? So that isn't really the goal of ADA. I want to make sure that we all understand, not only the .39 compliance, but also the spirit of allowing people with disabilities to vote freely and independently and privately. And that should always be the goal of the Registrar's Department, and it is. We all want everyone to have the same opportunities and the same rights. So if you guys have any questions after that long tirade, the only thing left I have to say is, I see a lot of interested people out here today. Please call our office and volunteer to work the polls. We need you. We're always looking for new poll workers, and we're actually a pretty fun and nice group of people during the day on Election Day. You make new friends, you make a little money, and you have something to do.
Thank you, Melissa. I appreciate the closing comments. Are there any more questions from the council relative to those issues? I think, Steve, you had the most.
Yeah, just relatively, do you have any idea how many people we contacted with the Vogel Wetmore?
It's less than 400.
And we'll reach out to them sooner than later?
Yes. Now that we have this decided, we can go full steam ahead.
Yeah. And just want to have that pre-election analysis to go over our prep work before this election, just where we're concerning. Part of the reason we shouldn't have moved the polling location is there's still a lot of work to be done between now and Election Day. And if we could go over what things have to be done and have a plan in place and all...
I'm not sure I'm understanding the specifics of what you're asking.
Oh, I'm just...
If we're gonna keep it at the Armory?
Keeping it at the Armory. I'm sure your registrars want to know, coming in the front door, exiting the side door.
Yeah, I can let you know that. Of course.
So when are we going to notify the voters that have been contacted with a Vogel Wetmore location change?
Today's Monday, I'll draft it tomorrow, and contact printers to get postcards made.
And then we also want to know about the status of... There has to be a dozen to-do tasks under the title of registrar, that's canvassing process, that we should have an update on, and everything from meeting with high school students to register new students. There's a lot of items on that list that the state publishes.
So I want to just make sure I'm understanding this, because this is a little bit outside of what the topic of discussion is. So let me just make sure I'm understanding. So everything that we're doing in the office, you want to be aware of?
Not everything, but maybe a pre-election status. Are we ready to go for this election? And we should want to know, what are we ready for, what hasn't happened? And we just want to have a status on that.
Are you referring to canvass?
Yes.
Okay, it wasn't done this year, and the state is aware.
Okay. And is there a correction between now and Election Day to update?
The last I heard from the state was that they were gonna discuss it amongst themselves, but it was likely the law says you have to have all your canvass letters sent out by May 1st. Because that didn't happen, they can't just make something up. So the attorneys there are in discussion about what, if anything, needs to happen. However, I will let you know that canvass is about removing people that should not be on the list. People who have usually moved out of state is the biggest move, because we do death notices, we get those, people who move within town, we generally catch them beforehand. The annual canvass concerns people who have moved out of the state.
But don't we have inactive voters that, after so many years of not voting, are they still... Will they be able to vote on Election Day at...
Yes. If you're an inactive voter and you come to the polling place and you're on the inactive list, you get restored instantly, and you can vote.
Right.
Nobody is disenfranchised.
Okay, so they don't have to come to City Hall to get restored?
No. They can do it right at the polling place.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Was there anything else to this plan that you wanted us to submit to?
I just wanted to thank you for being patient and graceful in the comments that have been made, and also open to the suggestions.
Of course, of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think the only thing, because I do kind of feel like I have to wrap this up, is I would encourage the registrars to report back to the council. It can be after the election. What is the plan for next year's polling location?
Perfect.
So I just think it's important that this council hear back from the registrars, because a change of heart in the middle of the process makes for a lot of this confusion. So we're good? We agree?
Mary, the only thing I wanted to say is, I know Melissa had proposed hiring... If the move to Vogel Wetmore wasn't acted, they were gonna hire people to stand at Vogel at the Armory all day and direct people to Vogel Wetmore. If we could maybe use some of that money to hire a person to stand by the front door and assist anybody with problems with that heavy front door, just one person, it'd be a lot cheaper and solve that problem easily.
Okay.
All right, I'm done.
All right. One more poll worker to hold the door open. Got it? All right. All right. So, yeah, that's a call for assistance. I heard it. All right, so this motion has been made. made, a lot of discussion. I think we've come to the right conclusion at this point in time. And I would just encourage the two Registars, whose decision this should be, to report back to the council about what the plan is for 2026. All right. Let's move into item number four. Yeah.
Sorry, did I hear that?
I didn't say that. That was him.
All right, so I need a motion to adopt resolution number 143-279, supporting the Torrington housing authorities participation.
Still moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver, and seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And are there questions? I see, I hope she's still here.
Yeah.
Claudia is here to answer questions. Are there questions?
There's.
No questions? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Claudia.
There's no reason.
Yeah.
Item five, if I may, yeah, I'm sorry.
Take the conversation outside.
Yeah. This is.
All right, I'm moving into item five. This is a presentation and update for the Riverfront property located at 100 Franklin Street. This does not require any motion. I think this is in response to a request from council members on the status of that building and, William, you're on.
Great, good evening. I'm trying to liven it up, get like song and dance going maybe. So many of the meetings that I've attended have revolved around affordable housing. Some of them have been centered around the 100 Franklin Street Riverfront project, which was the Penrose project constructed in 2021, 2022, opened in 2002. The Penrose project, so I'll call it the Penrose project for simplicity's sake today. They have a 16-year tax exemption agreement with the city of Torrington. And part of that agreement is that they would construct the building on the property, 60 units, of which 75% of those units, or 45 total units, are set aside for affordable housing. For those people making 60% of the area median income or lower. I have a whole presentation set up with slides. If you could go to the next slide real quick. So, yep, perfect. So there are 60 units, there's 45 designated units as affordable housing. And how affordable housing is formulated, it's a lot of different government agencies, but primarily in the state of Connecticut. Well, the main resource that we'll utilize is Connecticut Housing Financing Authority, CHAFA. They provide the list for designations for area median income at 100%, 80%, 60%, cascading on down. They also use calculations to define rent limits for those that qualify for affordable housing, and then what the income qualifications are for affordable housing. So the Penrose property, the Riverfront property, we'll go to this one, I'll come back to Penrose. So what you see here on your screen, if you, if you scroll down to the blue section on the left, it designates what a single individual, one person, what the income categories are for the city of Torrington. So those making 100% are $81,000, those making 80%, $65,000, and those making 60%, for which we're talking about today, is $48,888. So that calculation takes in a lot of factors, not just the revenue, or not just the income for those people living in Torrington, but it's impacted by those making income in our neighboring cities. Not all of Lechew County, but our neighboring municipalities around the city of Torrington. Going down to the red section, which is at the bottom, that's where we break down what the rent limitations are for the different categories. So in the red category, the second column, which is the one-bedroom, is what I want you to focus on. The top row is 60% AMI for a one-bedroom unit. The max rent for that unit can be $1,310. What that means is that if I want to go rent a unit, and I meet the qualification, the income qualifications that make less than $48,000, I therefore qualify for that. I cannot be charged more than $1,310 for that one-bedroom unit. If you go to the next slide, please. So I kind of painted that picture. Again, if I, William Wallach, want to rent a one-bedroom apartment at the Penrose property, what I did was I reached out to Penrose and said, hey, what's your average rent? So they have 45 units that are designated for affordable housing. If I qualify for affordable housing, my average rent for one-bedroom unit would be 100, would $962. I referred earlier to CHAFA, what CHAFA's rate for one-bedroom, what I just showed you is $1,310. So that's a difference between what CHAFA recommends and what Penrose is actually charging for rent, $348. So that's an offset of what would be the normal, considered 60% AMI for Torrington, and what, or Penrose is actually charging. So to, to me, that's an offset, right? So you can see the calculation for a year, that's 348 times 12. And then if I were to stay in that apartment for 16 years, the entire exemption period, that's how much offset there would be, that I would not really be required to pay in rent. That's what would Penrose be charging. Take that, times 19 units, we're not allowed numbers here, $1,269,000. That's 19 units times 16 years. If you click to the next, what I did was I broke out, or there are two-bedroom units, there are three-bedroom units, what it is. I could go through each one if you need me to, but really if we get down to the very bottom, after it's all said and done, between what CHAFA recommends and what Penrose is actually charging, it's about a $3.1 million difference. And take me to the next slide. Again, so that was what CHAFA is recommending. These numbers here, what you see is one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, compared to what Penrose is charging for market rate units. So there are 45 affordable housing units and 15 market rate units. So for a one-bedroom, if I wanted to rent a one-bedroom unit, and I do not qualify under the 60%, I'd be paying $14.25. So again, the breakdown, these are the real rent numbers. There's a difference of $463, that offset. So if we do that times 12, $5,500 a year, and times 16 years, if I stayed there for the whole 16 years, because I just love Torrington that much, which I may happen to, is $88,896 that I have that offset of what the market rate is. That, there's a lot of assumptions in there that my rent is in place the same amount for 16 years. So total difference. I want you to remember this number, between what the market rate offers and what Penrose is actually collecting in rent, is about $4.3 million over 16 years. And take me to the next slide. They have a tax agreement with the city of Torrington that, that spans an entire 16 years. On the left, in the blue, is what they owe on an annual basis in taxes. This is an agreement with the city. This is a locked-in payment in lieu of taxes. And it's very easy to scroll down to the bottom blue section where it says, in 16 years, they're going to pay $604,706. If you go to the orange section on the right, that is an estimate of what their tax would be if they did not have any exemption at all. Some of the, so if you just go from left to right, the first year is what the real assessed value was in 2022. That would have been the real tax amount based on the real mill rate in 2022. As we get to 2025 and beyond, those are estimated mill rates, so the tax calculation is just an estimate. And if you go all the way to the bottom, you see, real dollars would be 4.6 million in tax revenue over 16 years. A difference of $4,017,000 of what we would, could potentially have collected had there been no tax agreement with the city. The tax agreement between city of Torrington and Penrose is that the difference between what they would have paid in taxes and what they actually pay during this tax exemption, the agreement is that that difference is to be used to offset the income, or sorry, not the income, to offset the cost of, sorry, reducing the affordable housing prices, right? So the, that, in the previous slide, that $363, or that $482 per unit difference, that tax difference is used, is to be used to pay for, or compensate for that offset. Go to the next slide, please. So on the left is, what I first went over is the CHAFA difference. In the middle is what the actual rents are. And on the right is if they use the 100% market rate. So what we have here is, in the middle, highlighted in the green section, is that in 16 years, Penrose will attain a $4 million savings in their taxes against the $4,300,000 offset. So again, a lot of the assumptions that are baked into the calculations, it's about a $300,000 difference in what, over that 16-year span. The negative indicates that Penrose is leaving money on the table. They could be potentially raising the rents and, or lowering the rents in Saratoga City. All the way to the right is 100% market rate. So if Penrose were to charge for all 60 units, the full market rate value, they would be collecting over that 16 years, about $11.7 million in revenue that they're not, because they chose and elected to utilize the tax deferment and other state programs that required the public housing. That is the nuts and bolts, very nuts and bolts. I tried to keep it as dry as I possibly could.
Mission accomplished.
And I did not intend to put it in at 8:21.
Especially with the Buccaneers playing, okay?
Questions or comments from the council?
Well, thank you. I mean, this is, this is really terrific. Thank you for following up on this. I mean that. I know a lot of us have been asking these questions for a while, and I would love to get the same consideration from our Board of Education. It would be for me to let discussion go by without pointing out that problem. What, you know, what the city absorbs in additional costs because of the students. I would love to.
So that was a question that I did. William and I met this morning and went over the presentation. And I, I predicted that would be one of the questions.
Good. You can smell it. It's an older.
I know.
It's an old.
All right, not to say you were predictable.
Yeah.
But yeah, the question, William, that is asked is, you know, how many students, how many young children are living in this complex, and students of the Torrington Public Schools? And the last time that question came, I got the answer for you, but what they identified is, out of the 12 students at the time that were living in the building, seven of them were new to the district, and four were already in the district. So an update on that is what you'd like to see?
No, no, no.
No?
No, it's not. So basically, seven, this, this building is, we're also, we're paying for those seven students as, then that cost to the city essentially is.
So, seven, seven new students. Yeah.
That's, that's really only part of it, though. So I did, I did fire off a request for an update on demographics. Haven't got that update yet. However, the, whenever you build housing, you have to build in the consideration that you're building new opportunities. So people that are, I use the categories A, B, C, and D, and you've heard me reference this before. If, if we consider the Riverfront A category, it has nothing to do with the quality, but just the cost, right? If we consider the Penrose facility in A category, people that were previously living in B are now, can afford to move into A, have filtered up. It opens up areas for people to move into B, right?
Yeah.
And so just because we just, we just, dis, reoriented seven people into A, those seven spots that maybe opened in B could have come from elsewhere. So it's really difficult to calculate what the total net change is, because you're only looking at the microcosm of, of a 60-unit building. You're not looking at the cascading impacts of all of the other. And that's just B. We're not looking at C and D, where the impacts of potentially families and children is moving in as well.
But to that point, if you were to go to the Secretary, excuse me, the State Department of Education website, you would see enrollment is down. So total enrollment is down. So I guess the net impact, for the next mayor to decide. Yeah. So to answer that question, if, you know, if the general population is showing a decline in enrollment, and the company that does those projections for the five-year out continues to project out more reduction in enrollment.
And I'd like to add one other thing, and it's not necessarily about kids, but I, Penrose has put in a response to the RFQ from the city of Torrington for the 100 Franklin Drive property, which is right adjacent to the Penrose property. And the same project manager that was leading that, Carmen Chung, is leading the charge on their RFP response now. And when I sent her the documentation, asking for everything I used to build out this, I also said, this is really legit counsel, legit questions from the city council that it helps to educate our city, our residents, everyone who's involved in this public process. And Penrose heard that loud and clear, Carmen Chung heard that loud and clear, and outwardly said, I want to incorporate this into our response to the proposal, because it's so important to be able to educate. And data that they may have used in 2020, 21 to start the original Riverfront project is so much different than what they're dealing with now. And so they're making a point to include that data and information in their presentations going forward.
Got it. Thank you, William. Thank you.
Any other questions for William on this matter? And it doesn't require any action. So if there are no other questions, we're going to move into the next item, which is also William's item. So I will entertain a motion to authorize Mayor Carbone to accept the revolving loan fund application and enter into an RLF contract with Sephery Properties, LLC, in an amount of $169,000 for the remaining soft costs to complete the Vinnie's Restaurant Brownfield remediation project as detailed in Economic Development Director's memo. Thank you, is that Councilman Waldron? The only thing I want to make, make clear in this motion are the terms. So I'm looking at $169,000 to be loaned out over a six-year period of time, or I should say paid back within six years, at an interest rate of 2.5%. So the motion was made by Councilwoman Waldron, that your understanding is six years at two and a half percent?
Yeah.
And seconded by Councilwoman Spino, six years, two and a half percent. Motion made, seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm going to call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Good interest, right?
Yeah, good deal.
Item number seven, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments and transfer requests for fiscal year 25, 26.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, and seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions or comments?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
This is, this is the, the transfers, right?
Yes.
The very first one, the capital outlay, so that 1.1 mil, is that for? Why are we doing that? Public Works Facilities Transfer.
Okay. Here, I'm going to assist him.
So, these are all of the budget transfers that we do in the beginning of the year. So when we adopt the budget, these are built into it, saying we're going to automatically move these funds into the capital. So that city real estate is all of the budgeted dollars that was approved for the capital outlay for ongoing projects within the city.
Got it, okay. Just, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay. And I appreciate the question came out, because we have in prior years waited almost to the end of the year to do those budget transfers. So doing it this early in the year does prompt a good question.
I was going to make sure I wasn't missing something there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So any other questions on, and again, this is FY26, budget transfers into the capital reserves. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion by the city council here in acting as a water pollution control authority to approve budget amendments and transfers requested for FY25, 26, as further described in the manager of budgets letter. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And are there questions for Eric? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Going to move into FY24, 25, budget amendments. I will entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments and transfer requests for fiscal year 24, 25, as further described in the manager of budgets letter dated September 9. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none. This is contingent, these would be contingent on Board of Finance. So just so that this, this motion is read. just so that this, this motion is read correctly, it is to approve the budget amendments and transfer requests for FY twenty-four, twenty-five, contingent on Board of Finance approvals. So Councilwoman Waldron, is that what your motion amends? And Councilwoman Spino, your second. All right, good. All right. No questions, I'm going to call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Erica. We should have put you first.
That's okay.
Item ten, I will entertain a motion on recommendation of Small Cities Committee to approve the subordination request in Torrington Savings Bank as outlined in our treasurer's email dated September third, twenty twenty-five.
Aye.
Thank you, I heard Councilwoman Waldron and Councilman Kevin Arrow. Questions or comments?
Yes, the Small Cities Committee met before the meeting quickly, and we voted unanimously to approve the subordination request. So that'll put our small city alone behind the loan they're getting from Torrington Savings Bank. And there's plenty of equity.
And quite honestly, it's a good thing to do anyways, to subordinate so they can invest in their property and make the repairs that are necessary. It's, it's a good community thing for us to do.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You know, right here, I think I need to add, or request the council to add by two-thirds of a vote to the agenda, one, two, three, agenda items relative to the scheduling of a public hearing on ordinances. So do I have a motion to add three agenda items for public hearing on ordinance matters?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So the first agenda item is a motion to schedule a public hearing for changes to ordinance chapter eighty-five, Building Construction Alteration, Renovation, and Demolition.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none. I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item two, I will entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on October sixth. I've done this wrong, haven't I? Did I do this wrong? It's fine. So, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll just close this up. All right, I'll do it. So you can ignore the first motion when you do the minutes. I'm fine? Okay. All right. It is the same chapter?
One fourteen dash two.
Got it. So the motion I'm looking for is to schedule a public hearing on October sixth, twenty twenty-five for revisions to chapter one fourteen dash two, Citation Procedures and Fines for Zoning Violations, chapter one fourteen dash seven, Citation Procedures and Times for Inland, Wetland, and Water Course Violations.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in, or any questions? Hearing none.
Just a comment from the ordinance committee. We had a long agenda, unlike the small cities. So we're moving along some of these changes. As you'll note, when you do see the changes, particularly in chapter eighty-four, it's been quite condensed from the original ordinance. And, you know, I'll make more comments, you know, after the public hearing, but I do think, very thankful that we have an ordinance committee that's reviewing these and moving them forward so that we can some of this, these changes.
Very busy ordinance committee. All right. Motion's made and seconded. If there are no other comments, I will call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So should I go and clean up that first motion? I just said to schedule the public hearing. I didn't say the date. Do you need me to fix that? Or is that okay? Heather?
I made the motion, so I'll amend it.
All right. So I, I need, I just want to go back and clean up the first motion. I said to schedule the public hearing. I did not read into the motion the date. So schedule the public hearing for October sixth, twenty twenty-five. Motion was made by Councilwoman Rouette. You confirm you, yep. And Councilwoman Spino. All right. And so if I could just have all in, in favor for the October sixth hearing date?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry about that. It's late. I'm tired. All right. We're moving on to I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department report for the month of August twenty twenty-five. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector authorize the tax refunds indicated on listed.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refunds indicated on listed September. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Oliver. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, I will entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
Aye.
Second.
Stay there. Sorry.
I heard Councilwoman Waldron, I heard Councilwoman Spino.
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a department head, fire chief.
And away my turn.
I just want to thank everybody for your support being your new fire chief. I'm proud and excited to take this challenge and bring the department ahead in the future. So I want to thank you all. I've worked with you all before as a deputy. Looking forward to working for you all that it's going to stay as the fire chief. I have.
Thank you, chief. Anything else from economic development this evening? No? Anything from the engineering department this evening? Thank you. Anything further from finance budget? Anything from the city clerk's office? Right.
Didn't even think about that.
Yeah. And the, oh yeah, because we've got a new street name. No, I think the address changed also.
Wait, it's.
Change. Yeah, because it was not Middle School Drive anymore. I think it's Torreinford, Torreinford Street. East Pearl? The driveway comes off of East Pearl. All right.
That'll confuse everybody.
That certainly will.
So it's not the middle school?
It's not the Armory.
Everyone's going to show it. We're all going to the Armory apparently.
Or the new middle school.
Or the new middle school.
Yeah. Anything from Corporation Council?
Nothing there, thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right. So we're going to go into item fifteen. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members. Motion? Do you have a motion? Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Starting to my right, anything this evening, Mr. Waldron?
Nope, I'm good.
Enough. Mr. Councilman Iveyne.
A question on tax collection. Can we have a report of where we are with tax collection after the increase, how our taxpayers are doing in terms of?
Can you hear me now? I, I want to, I'm asking for a tax report of our tax collection status. Wanted to know how are we doing on collecting property taxes this year as compared to previous years?
We get a hun, yeah, we get a hundred percent of taxes regardless, and it's.
Well, we are, but.
How were?
Our citizens making payments. We need to see how.
Doesn't matter if we get a hundred percent. It's very unique in this.
That, that's understandable. The tax collector fronts the money, but our citizens still have to pay taxes. How are?
Not your problem after that.
So what I will do.
It's our citizens. It's, it's how they're doing with the tax increase, right?
A hundred percent of the.
The city.
That's great, but we should know how we're doing on our citizens paying the taxes to our city.
I will ask.
Yeah, what kind of unpaid taxes are? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
For clarification.
Yeah. We, we should know on what, what the effect of this recent increase has to our citizens.
As long as it's in aggregate and not naming citizens, I don't think that they could turn over, right?
We, we don't need that detail, but.
Public record. Yeah, except for the sewer use fees. Yeah. So we can certainly ask for a report. I will reach out to the tax collector to see when she can probably pull that together.
Yeah, just maybe just counts or percentages or dollar amounts. We don't need to know further detail.
Got it. Okay. Yes, I could do that. Councilwoman Spino?
Just congratulations again to our new fire chief, Dave Tripp. And beautiful ceremony again, nine eleven ceremony. Perfectly done. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rouette?
Yes, congratulations to our new chief, but also my condolences to the Spino family and plus of your mother-in-law and Nick's mother.
Thank you.
I didn't realize how broad her, her touch was through the community until talking to some very close friends, but my condolences to your family.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kevin Arrow?
Same sentiments for me. And also congratulations to the chief. I think sitting through this meeting was like your first sort of.
It's initiation.
Initiation, your hazing as a department head. So congratulations. But can't hear?
Well.
You probably don't want to hear what.
Lorraine, she's telling you, I'm not sure. She should sit closer, I think.
Oh. You heard me, chief, right? Okay. Fair enough, enough. Okay.
Okay.
And also I'd just like to commend the council and the mayor for how we managed to arrive at a consensus vote tonight. I thought, you know, we've been together a while as a council and a mayor, and I, I, I thought we just, as a team, worked our way through a potentially really problematic situation very well. So I'd like to commend everybody for how we did that. Thank you.
I love going last because I'm echoing all of that. Yes, condolences. I'm sorry. Congratulations. And it really was kind of inspiring for us to go through the process with everyone tonight. And I just think it shows that none of this is predetermined. We come here and we make our decision here, and the public comment matters. And we all say this, I wish more people came to the meetings.
Yep.
You know, we, we do what we can to get the message out. And I know life is complicated for everyone, but it was really, really positive, I thought, tonight that the community saw us work together to solve a common problem.
Right.
So, and that's our goal all the time, the extent that we can. So, thank you.
Wish they were all here to hear you say that. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Lorraine is here. Send the message out.
Yeah, if you could text a couple people.
All right. If there, oh, I have to open the meeting back up to the public for public comment on agenda items. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda item.
I was proud to be here tonight. That, that worked out really well because that's the opinion that I had, but I didn't know where, where y'all were going to go with it. So thank you. What strikes me as odd, though, is that we have a city department in that building. Parking rec is in that building.
Correct.
And senior citizens walk in that building every day and all the other activities that that go on in there. So if it was really ADA non-compliant, I would have hoped that we would have addressed that prior to this. But thank you all for.
And, and, and I know this is not what we're supposed to do, but we are. You know, it was identified as a problem. Our facilities director is, is working. He reached out to contractors to see how we can fix it. You know, question of, you know, fixing it where it is, putting it where it belongs next to the ADA parking, which is in the back of the building. All of that conversation has been ongoing for the last couple of years. As you heard, you know, the, the slim margin of the ADA non-compliance, does it, does it render the building that it should be closed? But should it be repaired? Absolutely. Before we get a CHRO complaint, absolutely. And, right. And we only got that building two years ago. So we did inherit a lot of headaches.
And I do wish everyone had stayed.
I do too.
To understand what all goes on.
Yeah.
Here. And that then they would come back tomorrow night for our meeting.
Yeah. I know, really.
Seriously.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to address the council on agenda items, please? Okay, good. We're moving into item seventeen. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I heard Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Rouette, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.
So as, with all the.